Thank you so much, TJ. We will call this work session to order. Today is Monday, June 15th, 2020. It is 10:03. We will begin our work session. But before we start this morning, we have a special presentation from the Mayor of Douglasville, Rochelle Robinson, is here, and then we will proceed with our meeting. Mayor Robinson, good morning.
Yes, good morning. How are you?
Oh, great. And you? Thank you for being here.
Oh, you're welcome. I wanted to congratulate you and Commissioner Kelly Robinson on securing another rotation, another time we'll be elected. Congratulations. We're very proud of you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Board of Commissioners. I really appreciate this honor. I have a letter here from myself in the City Council, and it reads, "To Mr. Mark Till, County Administrator, Douglas County Courthouse, Dear Mr. Till, we wish to congratulate you on receiving the Jerry R. Griffin Excellence in Public Service Award. This is a monumental accomplishment for you personally and a milestone for your career, and is a well-deserved honor. This award has affirmed something that we have known for quite some time, that you are a great leader and an asset to our community, and an even better person. I have cherished working alongside such a wonderful and committed community partner. Again, congratulations on this accomplishment. We look forward to continuing our harmonious and fruitful partnership to create an even better Douglasville-Douglas County community for years to come. Respectfully yours, Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the City of Douglasville, Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller, Councilmember Mark Adams, Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley, Councilmember Samuel Davis, Councilmember Howard Estes, Councilmember Nicole Miller, and Councilmember Chris "The Coach" Watts." Congratulations, Commissioners, and thank you so much, and congratulations, County Administrator. You are awesome. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mayor Robinson. And we could just, if we could, if we could extend another round of applause for our county administrator as we continue to celebrate his success. Our Board of Commissioners, if you could just give a clap, and also our directors is on the line. Thank you so much this morning. Thank you so much, Mayor Robinson, for coming out this morning to impart or share this special commendation for our county administrator. You are correct. He is definitely the wind beneath my wings, and I know the Board of Commissioners would echo me as well. So thank you so much for being here, and you're welcome to stay if you would like for our meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to extend a special thanks to the mayor and the City Council. This is a great honor coming from them, and I look forward to working with them and the mayor and council and their staff in the future as well. And I don't see why we can't continue this relationship.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, Mr. Till.
All right. Thank you so much. Congratulations again. Board of Commissioners, again, and also the citizens of Douglas County who are joining us this morning, thank you for being here. Board of Commissioners, today, certainly, we are not able to take any comment, public comment, but however, I am encouraging our citizens to email your district commissioner or either call Mark Till or our county administrator or send myself an email or you're welcome to call me. With that being said, we have a pretty robust agenda this morning, and what I'm going to do is, we have a SPOLOST presentation, but before I start the SPOLOST presentation, I just want to briefly just go over some of the items on the agenda, and then we'll spin back to the SPOLOST presentation. Board of Commissioners, be prepared tomorrow to approve our minutes. We have our commission, our meeting minutes, work session minutes, and our executive session minutes, and I ask that you take the time to just briefly look those minutes over, to review those minutes, and then be prepared to approve or reject accordingly. County Administrator has some business, and I must go with tab number four, five, and six, and then we will pivot back to our SPOLOST presentation. County Administrator has authorization to allocate additional 2016 SPOLOST funds in an amount of $22,380.64 for streetlights on the I-20 ramps at Chapel Hill Road, Highway 5, and Lee Road due to GDOT requirements. County Administrator, you want to chime in?
Yes, ma'am. Due to GDOT, Georgia DOT requirements through the permitting process, so for Highway 5, there was a decrease of approximately $3,000. Chapel Hill Road, there was an increase in the cost of construction of the streetlights in the amount of $24,338. And Lee Road was an increase of around $1,100. So the total increase for the streetlights on I-20 is $22,380.64. With these additional costs, we are still at approximately $384,000 for the total project for streetlights. That includes I-20 and the various streets around the county. So we're still well under the $500,000 that was allocated through SPOLOST.
Okay. Thank you so much, County Administrator. Board of Commissioners, are there any questions? And I want to remind you, Board of Commissioners, if we could limit our comments this morning to at least three minutes, and if you had a rebuttal, five. I mean, two minutes, if we could give you a total of five. We have a very tight, robust schedule today or agenda. Any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners before I move on to tab number six? I mean, tab number five. Okay. I'll move on to tab number five, Authorization to Accept a Grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for Felony Drug Court for the 2021 Budget Year and Authorize the Chairman to Sign All Related Documents. Tim Hood, are you there?
Good morning. I am here. How's everybody doing this morning?
Doing well.
Very good. This is our, as I call it in years past, bread and butter grant. This is the money that we typically receive from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. We are reduced this year, which is not a surprise based on the current financial situation of the state. As a matter of fact, I've just been able to finally get the numbers together. We don't even have the award packet here in the building yet. But we're looking at $549,458 in grant money coming to Superior Court for Continued Accountability Court Operations. That is a very strong number. I imagine the state could come back at some point in the future and present to us a budget reduction on top of that. But that's the number for now, and I'm open for questions if you need me.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any questions for Tim Hood, Board of Commissioners? We have any questions for him this morning?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Vice Chairman Robinson, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Tim. Quick question. So this is for fiscal year 2020, 2021? Did I hear that right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. All right, 2021. And you sort of floated that perhaps the state may come back with an impact on us, meaning our felony drug court. Is that inclusive of the 14% that's already been stated publicly? Or, I mean, I'm trying to get a feel of what you're saying, that they're going to add 550 now, and then they're going to take it away? Talk to us.
That's exactly correct. I believe that we are looking at an additional percentage reduction. If the state is reduced by 14%, I would expect for this award amount to be reduced by 14%. There is conversation that it might only be 11. To be perfectly honest, it's conjecture. I can't tell you what that reduction is going to be. I even went to our grant specialist at CJCC and said, "How should I proceed? How can I be transparent with my board and with my public, telling them, 'You're telling me that this money is coming, but that there will be a reduction, but I can't tell them what that reduction is.'" And CJCC's response was, "That's absolutely correct. You can't tell them what it is because we don't know. The legislature is just now back in session, and until there is an approved state budget, the money from the state can't be finalized for the accountability courts." So we are in a state of flux right now. We know what our best-case scenario could be, and as those updates come, I will let the county know. These are the changes that are happening to our budgets as they are officially made. Right now, we have nothing official other than the actual award amount is official. They have made that official to me, but they also sent a letter saying, "Understand that a state budget reduction will reduce your award amount of an unknown number."
Okay. All right. Respectfully understand, and that's why it's important to have data to make decisions. You need data. You need input. And so I appreciate what you're saying. We've got a finance committee later today. We're likewise in our own situation and trying to understand, okay, we're responsible for all of it, across the whole board, and see what the impacts are accordingly. I'm going to move beyond that. Duly noted, we'll come back 30 days from now. We'll probably be in another state of being. Obviously, hopefully the state's budget will be approved, and obviously, we'll be in a different place as well. So we can give ourselves 30 days. This wasn't holding you to fire anything. We're just asking a general question. All right, I got one more question. And again, it goes both ways, Madam Chair. We want to keep our questions short, but also likewise, y'all got to be tight on your response. So my question has to do with, how are the accountability courts doing right now in light of the pandemic? In light of, what is reality? And that's an open state answer. How are you?
I'm happy to report that the accountability courts were prepared. They were prepared for not necessary COVID-19, but for operations might not continue with our normal procedures. We were able to modify those plans for COVID-19 to the point that I think it's important that the public at the board realize that we did not miss a single court day. Every court day that has been scheduled has been kept. We have not missed a single hour of treatment. We deploy, provide, deliver, whatever word you would like, dozen of hours of treatment every week. And the Saturday where the judicial executive order came out, or the judicial order of emergency came out on top of the executive order suspending a lot of court services, we moved to a virtual format. We were ready. So it has absolutely impacted some of our operations. We are doing some things less. We are doing some things in a different way. Surveillance in the community is a different animal right now than it used to be because we are trying to keep the surveillance officers healthy and the participants healthy. We are making plans for how we phase in in-person services and keep people engaged in the accountability courts at a high level. We are still providing sanctions and incentives as the accountability court model calls for. So I'll try to be brief and just say that I think that we have a lot to be proud of in Douglas County because there are dozens, if not hundreds, of courts across the nation that absolutely shut down services and did not continue to operate. And that's not the case for Douglas County. We continue to operate. We modified, and we've missed a single hour of treatment.
I got it. That's sufficient of, Tim. My time allotment has pretty much come to an end, but that is sufficient. Thank you. Madam Chair, are you up?
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to move on. There are no other comments from the Board of Commissioners. First of all, let me go just before. I only see two Board of Commissioners. Well, I've seen Commissioner Robinson, and I've seen Commissioner Guyer. Commissioner Carthon and Commissioner Mitchell, are you on here?
President Accountant Ford.
Yes. Okay. I just want to make sure. Yeah, so many people on this morning. I just want to ensure I wasn't just proceeding without acknowledging all the Commissioners being on board. Okay, we're going to move on to tab number six. It's approval of an anticipated grant award for the misdemeanor state court DUI drug court program from the CJJ in the tentative amount of $95,754 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending July 30th, 2021, and have the chairman to sign all related documents. Are you on, Mrs. Granger? Ms. Anita Granger? I thought I saw Mark Till. Miss Granger, I saw her come in, but if not, we'll move on to the next one, and maybe she'll come back in a second.
No, ma'am. I did not see her on the list. She was invited, but I don't see that she's on at this time.
Is it anyone on here that can respond to? I see she's waiting in the lobby, AG.
Yeah, she's on there.
Okay. Miss Granger, I'm on tab number six, which is your anticipated grant of the misdemeanor state court DUI drug court program for CJJ. Can you elaborate for the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hold on a second? I'm sorry. I've been having a heck of a time getting into this meeting this morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Well.
I don't know what. My laptop has been like goofy. So I'm on my phone, so forgive me. I'm apparently having technical difficulties. It's today, Monday, it must be. So the anticipated amount of our grant is listed on the agenda, and that amount is going to be subject to whatever the budget that the state passes at the end of this month. So it could drop by as much as 14% is what I'm told, but it will not be more than that amount I've listed on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any questions from the Board of comments regarding this grant? I believe it really echoes.
Yeah. There is a 10% match.
Okay, 10% match. Okay. Thank you so much. And I believe it really echoes similar with just Tim Hood just shared with us as well, the same grant, because it's based on, it's contingent on the final results of the state's budget. Thank you so much, Mrs. Granger, this morning. We're going to move on to tab number seven, Authorization to Amend the Budget and Accept a Grant Award in the Amount of $48,996 from the Council of Accountability Court Judges for the Family Treatment Court and Authorize the Chairman to Sign All Related Documents. Director King?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. Same as the two before me. This is our state's award. I'm sorry, the sound is coming back to me. Our amount is $48,996, and that is prior to any cut that may come down the line.
Okay. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners or concerns? All right. Thank you so much, Ms. King. And what I'm doing, Board of Commissioners, I'm just going to go on all the way to tab number nine, and that takes care, that will address all our grants this morning. We have two grants left.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, could we get the department heads to tell us whether or not there's a 10% grant, a match, and was in their budget as we go down?
Okay. I'll just. I know. Ms. King, Jennifer King, can you share with us, is there a match required with your grant?
Yes, ma'am. There is.
What is it? Is it a 10%? What percentage?
It is 10%.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I hope that answers your question, Commissioner Guyer. Was it, was this 10% budgeted?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, typically with these things. Yes, Commissioner Mitchell?
You might want to ask those who are not speaking to actually mute their speakers because I think we get a lot of feedback. So if you're not, you know, speaking or something is going on, the audience, you know, just FYI.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. I couldn't hear, but on my end. But please, if you're not speaking, please turn your mics off at this time, and then as I call your name, please proceed with turning them back on because it's given us a lot of feedback and noise and background noise. All right, we have two grants left this morning, which is always good news with grants. Tab number eight is Authorization to Accept the Bureau of Justice Assistance FY20 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant in the Amount of $52,901 and Authorize the Chairman to Sign All Related Documents. Director Stanley, Tiffany Stewart-Stanley.
Good morning, Chairman Jones. And County Administrator Mark Till. This grant being provided by the Bureau of Justice Assistance to personal protective equipment for county government law enforcement, force, or property officer, or the county. We were awarded $52,901 for the grant. There is no match.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, did you hear Director Stanley? Because it looked like she was a little choppy with the response, but did you hear? I hope all Board of Commissioners heard. If there are no questions, thank you so much. This is exciting. Is there a match required for this grant or anything? And I believe this is straight, okay, straightforward. We're going to move on to tab number nine, Authorization to Accept the Keep America Beautiful CLPP Grant in the Amount of $20,000 and Authorize the Chairman to Sign All Related Documents and Amend the Budget. Tiffany Stewart-Stanley, Director Stanley. Your mic is not on.
Okay. So this is just a continuation. We were awarded $10,000 last year, and this year, we're being awarded $20,000 for our cigarette litter prevention program, and this is to raise public awareness for those who do choose to smoke, know how to properly dispose of their cigarettes. We were awarded $20,000 plus another $1,500 in portable ashtrays and pocket ashtray. And so there is no match, and we are just asking that this grant be accepted.
Okay. Thank you so much. Board of Commissioners, you heard this grant is for the cigarette litter program and also to allow those who smoke to dispose of their cigarette butts in a very gracious manner and not throw them on the ground, and they have like a personal pocket ashtray. So any questions regarding this grant? Pretty self-explanatory, straightforward. So thank you so much, Director Stanley.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to pivot back to our presentation for the SPOLOST update. And TJ, for some reason, it looked like we're getting a lot of, I'm hearing a lot of background noise this morning, and I believe everyone has their mics muted at this time. Okay. We have our SPOLOST update. Mr. Terry Gable, would you please proceed? And thank you for being here this morning with us.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's Terry Gable with Atlas, and I'm going to give a quick update on the SPOLOST program. Hopefully, everybody can hear me, and I hope everybody's doing well this morning. So I've got a presentation. I'm going to share it with everyone. So I'll just go through it as we normally do. Get it started here. Okay. So with no further ado, I'll go ahead and move through it. I know we got a tight schedule. Madam Chair, if we have time, David Good does have a few slides at the end for a vendor update, but I'll finish the project update, and you can let us know if we have time for that.
Okay.
So moving forward, we have just crested the $40 million mark for the total amount of funds that have been invoiced out of the program since the beginning of the program. We still have some invoices in the pipeline, so it's, I'm sure it's a little.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Gable, I hate to, but your PowerPoint is not on the screen. Do you?
It's not.
No, it's not showing. I just don't want you to.
No, we actually see it, Madam Chair. It is on the screen.
You see it? Okay. Okay, well, proceed. I'm the only one that I can listen. Keep going.
So keep going?
Yes, please. Please proceed. I apologize. I can't see it.
Okay. So we're talking about the revenues. There was $40 million that's been invoiced since the beginning of the program, and just breaking that down by each program, which $19.3 million currently for the fire department, $14.2 million for transportation, and just a little over $4 million for parks and wrecks. The revenues, I'll be reporting on the April revenues and then the work through May. Keeping in mind, this month, or April, was the beginning of year four, our first month. So we'll gradually get through that and see how the pandemic affects us. But we had a pleasant surprise with April, and the revenues came in just about dead on. The projections, $2 million, $32,000. We're just under about $25,000 from projections. So it was a good month considering the situation we're in, and we'll move forward with that with a positive attitude. And just looking at the graph, back to April of last year, you know, the flat line is the projections. You can see, we had a good year, good, solid year in all of SPOLOST year three. We had a couple spikes, and obviously, the one in December that really helped us out. But since January, it's been hitting right on the line of the projections with this last one in April. So we'll continue with that, and we'll keep a very close eye on it, obviously, and then we'll make whatever adjustments we need to make as we move through the program. The total SPOLOST revenues for years one, two, three, and the beginning of four is $77.8 million. If you can compare that to the total projections, we're still right at $3.2 million that we over, the revenues over what was projected. So we've still got a solid number there as we move into the SPOLOST year four. To update us real quick on where we're at with the bond obligation, we are going into year four, which is the fourth payment that we'll be striving for here. The first payment will be made October 1st of 2020 of $509,000. The second payment, as we've done in the past, will be made April 1st, 2021, at $16.8 million for a total of $17.3 million for year four payment. At the beginning, the total payment was $69.1 million, and as we enter into year four, the balance on the bond due is $21.6 million. So we're slowly chipping away at it, and after year four, it's one small payment left compared to the other payments. So with that, we'll go into some quick project updates. The countywide digital radio system, as we've reported, is in the final stages of it. Motorola is making some last-minute additions with the BDA, the bidirectional antenna in the jail that's being installed. We have some miscellaneous equipment that they're bringing in also with sirens, which are weather warnings, and some headsets with a fire truck. So the pandemic in itself has started affecting, and we've seen it in some other sectors of the industry, equipment and materials. So things are starting to slow down, and I think they had some issues with getting some of this equipment in. But everything is going well. I think the chief has been very pleased with the overall testing for the system. And again, we look forward to wrapping this up at the end of June, and it may go into July because of the pandemic and getting some of this equipment in. Again, we are in the final stages of it, and hopefully we'll be there here shortly, and then we'll make a final acceptance and close that project out. Ambulance procurement for 2020, we have two that are on the books for 2020. The chief is moving forward with advertising for one ambulance at this point. We're just, again, being cautious about what we're, about moving into this year with the pandemic. But they'll go ahead and get that advertised for one ambulance for this year and get that on the street. Fire truck procurement for 2019, I've got that in here. We just took delivery of it in May and made the payment in late May, but I didn't want to show a picture of it. This is a new piece of equipment that's added to the chief's fleet. I'm sure he's very proud of that, and we'll take full advantage of it. But they do have it. It is in service now. So we're in the process of, the chief had one more fire truck for 2020 that was in his program. It's been approved by the board, and we've selected a vendor for it. We're just working through, he and Scott are working through the final stages of the paperwork to give the vendor a notice to proceed. It's going to take approximately a year to fabricate the fire truck, and we'll give you reports as we go through, as we go through the year. Staff vehicles, the chief had two vehicles that he has been put out for order. It's two F-50s. They should be delivered this fall. So we'll keep track on that. Don't anticipate any issues with the pickup trucks. And last, on the chief's list of projects is Station 11. If you remember, this is a project where it's primarily site improvements in sewer. in sewer, sewer system improvements for the chief. It's to redo the parking lot, make better access for the fire truck coming in from the back off 92. And we are in the preliminary design stages of it. At this point, just trying to work with the various departments, including GDOT, since it's on 92, and trying to make some determinations on what, what's the best sewer system for the fire station. And it's having a big impact on it with the improvements that we're trying to make. But we're working through that and we'll be working with the chief and GDOT and the various, and WSA to make some final decisions on that. So with that, everything's moving quite well with the fire department and we'll move into, into transportation. I'm sure you've probably glanced at your agendas. Miguel has several things on the, on the agenda that he'll be going into detail. Well, he'll be going into more detail as he presents them. And I'll just give a brief recap of what's affecting each project. So for the 2020 resurfacing, we need to get this project underway. On the agenda is the board's approval, considered approval for ballon paving for the milling and, the milling and patching for the resurfacing this year. And if you remember that, that piece of the resurfacing program this year is being contracted out. The milling and the patching and the Douglas County's maintenance forces will be doing the resurfacing. So we'll get that underway once that's approved and we'll move forward with, and get the 2020 resurfacing started this year. The Stewart Mill Road project, if you remember, is in the right-of-way phase. Miguel has got all the options out to the various property owners. And he is still waiting on responses to come back and trying to be a little bit patient with them considering the pandemic and again, the situation we're in. So we're needing those to come back from the property owners and he'll move forward with, with acquisition of...
Big Terry.
Yes?
We don't see your presentation.
Don't see it now?
Yes, sir.
Just try to see where we're at. How about that?
Yes, I see it.
Yes, I see it.
Okay. Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
All right, so if everybody's good and see it, we'll move forward. So Stewart Mill Road, again, is in the right-of-way phase. Bright Start John West has been, was approved by the board last month, contractor for construction. We had a, Miguel and him had a pre-construction meeting on Friday. They've given the contractor a notice to proceed. So this project will be our second intersection project on the SPOLOST program that'll be under construction this, this year. Some good news there. Sweetwater Church at Doris Road is, has been under construction, is on schedule right now. No issues there. It's been moving a little bit slow. Just trying to get the utilities out of the way. And again, that's a pretty tight intersection, but no problems in the projects, like I said, the project's on schedule and moving forward. Chapel Hill Road is in the design phase. This is another project that's on your agenda that Miguel will be bringing to you. There's been discussions back and forth about moving that footprint for that project to a five lane with a flush median. And that decision has come out of Transportation Committee and will be, is being presented to the board. It's requiring some additional design work by SEI. So there'll be a, it's an item on there for supplemental agreement for additional design costs to do the, the additional design work for the five lane and for the extension of the terminal. So that's good news. That, that's been, it was an important part of that project and a good move by the board to get us to this point. But we need to get the designer back on track once we move past this point, if it's approved, and get the SEI back on, back on track. Highway 5 is still in the design phase and moving forward. Miguel and him were able to work out an agreement with the, with the developer on the amount of right-of-way that's needed. So we're full steam ahead now with the, with the, with the design plans and look forward to moving into the right-of-way phase once that gets completed and we get a solid footprint for the, for the right turn lane on Highway 5. Coast Road Bridge at Dog River, no updates from GDOT. We fully anticipate the contractors on schedule and will be in Douglas County, as we've reported in the past, this fall. Hopefully, as we move closer to that timeframe, we'll start getting some more accurate updates from the contractor and we'll, we'll start giving you more specific dates on when he's going to move in and the timeframe of the project. And moving on to our sidewalk projects, again, we've got a few of these on the, on the agenda. The first, first one is Lithia Springs Elementary School. On the, on the agenda for the board to review and approve is the Corbett Group for the contractor, $363,000 for the construction of the, of the sidewalk over in Lithia Springs. And then the same thing with Chestnut Log Middle School, Prime Foundations was a little bid and it's on the agenda for approval at $275,000 roughly to get this project under construction this summer. And we, I'm sure all of us looking forward to getting some sidewalk projects out there on the ground. And then lastly, with the sidewalk projects is the New Manchester High School, another item on the agenda. The, Miguel's finally got to go ahead from GDOT for the speed reduction on 92. But the first phase of that would be a public hearing and that's what you'll see on your agenda for the board to give him the authorization to move forward with that. The speed reduction will allow us to complete the design for this, for this project and to provide a protected crosswalk on 92, make it a much safer environment for the pedestrians out there and be able to safely cross 92. But also the, another big important part of it is it'll, it kicks us back into the design phase and SEI can complete the design on it, which is about 90% done, but it'd be wrapping up the final plans and getting the final permit from GDOT. Whitestone Cover has been delayed and we've kind of kept you abreast of this. There was a design change in the footing and which resulted in a dig dug. So that was, that was well worth the time it's taken. And that is also on the agenda as a change order for the Corbett Group and a reduction of around $123,000 from the original contract price. And again, once we get this approved and get it, get the paperwork executed, we will be able to allow the contract to get back to work and finish the cover out there. The streetlights, we've got those in two phases. Mark just addressed the phase one that finally got, and we're working towards getting all, everything approved that GDOT requiring on the plans. And once we get that approved for the cost adjustment, we'll get that, hopefully get that project started in phase one and we'll be moving into phase two with the various intersections and road segments around the county. Hollow Net 92 at Riverside Parkway. If you remember this project, we've got design approval to do some studies at this intersection and Anawaki. But Miguel has been working with, with GDOT and they are looking at doing a, another quick response as they did at Mount Vernon to go in and just install a traffic signal, which that would be super. It'll, it'll help our budget. And if they do what they did at Mount Vernon, they cover the cost on it. So that's, we're waiting, waiting now very patiently to get a final decision from them and see if they're going to put a signal here. And then Miguel can move forward with what, what he needs to do to finalize that, that quarter through those three intersections. And moving on to our big project, Lee Road Widening Project, last month. Moving into June, GDOT, Miguel's finally gotten approval from GDOT on the, on the funds to go ahead and advertise this project. So we're really right on the schedule where Miguel thought we would be is getting the project out in June for construction. So we're looking forward to that. He's got some task orders that he's looking at and trying to get everything set up and geared up to put this project under construction and get it, get it going this summer. So we'll have a very robust construction season of transportation before we can get all this, this underway, which it looks like we will this summer through the rest of the year. And then finally, with Miguel's projects, Maxim Road Sidewalk, from the GDOT project up to the county line, is moving along with no issues. Miguel reported that they're far along with the design. So hopefully this will be another project. There's no right-of-way involved in it unless that has changed since our last report. So this project will have a good chance of getting, getting final plans and getting, getting it out to bid this year also. So we could hopefully end up with all four sidewalk projects under construction this year. And typically, they're not, not that long of projects so that we can see them, see them all completed. Okay, with that, I'll, I'll move into the parks program. Starting with Deerlit Park Tennis Courts, Integrated Construction has this project. They are moving along. We're on schedule and within budget. At this point in time, we're trying to get the lights in. And you remember, we are dealing with, with a lot of rock out there. So we're working through that with the contractor. But again, we're on, we're on schedule and moving forward with it. We get the lights up and then they can, the building's already up and then they can start with the courts. And we can actually start seeing some tennis courts go in on that project. The multi-purpose rec center, it was a little slow out of the, out of the gate, but they have finally got that project out of the, the subgrade that we struggled with at the beginning of the year, the beginning of the project. And they poured footing foundations last week and should be this week prepping the, for the building slab. So finally getting this project up and start seeing some vertical structure go up, hopefully after this week or next week. But it's on schedule and on budget right now. The senior center at Lithia Springs, can only say good things with this project. They, Headley Construction out in Union has really done a good job in keeping the subs very busy. We, you can see it's primarily dried in. They're waiting on the brick to come in this week. Sheet rock is going up inside and the next thing, they'll get it bricked and they'll start installing the windows. So to this point, again, this, this project has gone very well. It's certainly on schedule and within budget. And it's really looking good and I think it's going to really be pretty. It'll be a big asset for the county once we get it, we get it completed. And then finally, the Bill Art Project, the concession building. This was paired up with Fair Play. It was two concession buildings in one contract. This was our groundbreaking that we did last month. That, this particular one is that Bill Art. And you can see the foundation of that building was just in last month. It's, it's obviously changed since that time. And then the Fair Play Concession Building that's in that same contract, the building's up. Got a good ways to go with it, but they got the structure up and will have it up. It will also be up at Bill Art probably within a couple of weeks to start finishing out that project. Madam Chair, with that, I'll open it up for questions. But David, David does have a few slides that he'd like to go through real quick if that's, if that is, if time allows.
Yes, town. Time, no permit. I would love for David to proceed in anything and I will allow the past business commissioners to proceed with their questions. Mr. Good?
Yes, son. Good morning. This is David Good, SPOLOST Communications Director. Good morning to you, Madam Chair, district commissioners, stakeholders, citizens of Douglas County, and all business owners. As you can see, we have about 114 vendors that's working on 78 projects. About 80 of those vendors are either in Douglas County or in the surrounding areas of Douglas County. There'll be 43 are local. And then of the other 34, 17 are in the state and the other 17 are, are outside of the state. Right now, if you see on here, about 70% of the SPOLOST is with our local vendors. In the past, this time last year, it was closer to about 30% and the money was even, was even lower. And I believe we can go to the next slide. And right now, we are doing a lot of virtual reality, which means that's the only way that we really can meet a lot of the vendors. And then at the same time, we're able to meet some of the vendors just going to local shops they have opened and have been leaving our cards and everything there. Next up, you see our local vendors about, you can see the amount of money is 55% is spent. Earlier, Terry mentioned that we have invoiced about $40 million. But what I track is what's in purchase order. And in purchase order, there's about $52 million that have been, have been allocated. If you think about it, you look at one of the centers, about $7 million. But if I track the $7 million, I don't track just the $100,000 that might have been spent in the beginning. So right now, this is what you see when you look at local vendors. We spent about four, about almost $5 million with vendors right here in Douglas County. And then we spent another almost $24 million with vendors that's with around Douglas County, like in Carrollton or within the western side of Atlanta. And then finally, this board of commissioners has really tried to push DBE and minority-owned vendors. And right now, we're about 64% of those active contracts are going to minority businesses. If you see the chart, 64 with minority, 36 non-minority. And with that, I am finished. If there aren't any questions.
Okay, thank you so much, Communications Director David Good. And also thank you, Mr. Terry Gable. Board of Commissioners, do you have any questions for Terry or either David this morning?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson?
Yeah, I just got one because most of mine will come up later during transportation, Miguel's time. Terry, where do we, I want to go back to the community center. And with two things, and something to what Mr. Good just stated, how are we doing project control? I get we live in a pandemic, but accountability is still accountability. We still must ensure that if construction is going on, somebody is putting their eyes, no pun intended, on what's going on out there. While I appreciate virtual, I've said this constantly in times past, there's nothing like real world. I don't like avatars. And so I just, I need assurance that somebody, that our program director is out there some kind of way touching these guys and overseeing. You're our proxy. You guys are there to represent the board of commissioners. And I'm just, we hadn't talked in a while, so I'm not after anything. But I need to hear, but what has been happening over the three to four months that we've been in timeout? Can you give us, can you, can you touch on that for a minute, Terry, please?
Yes, sir. Be happy to. So all the projects since day one, we started out with virtual meetings and my, my plan was to, to go to all the site visits. Each month, at least once or twice, the architect, the contractor, myself and James Worthington with the county, meet to go over the project status and anything, any issues that's come up that month. We started out doing those virtual. We've opened them up a little bit to actually doing them onsite. But outside of that, so with James Worthington, obviously, we keeping, we keeping tabs on the projects very close each month. And I try to get out there actually a little bit more than that just to, just to know the status of it and what's going on and talking with the superintendent and the project manager with each contractor.
Okay, that, that's fine. I just wanted to put it out there to, I was just hearing some things and I just, I needed that assurance. This is, okay, so what has been happening? This is okay, so what, what has been happening? I hear we're spending money. Right, it, it, you know, remember we're the check and balance, every now and then we'll, we'll show up and say, okay, now what's going on? And so, you know, who's overseeing the overseers in essence, so. All right, you get the point, let me move on, second point is, let's come back to the community center. You said we're a little bit slow coming out the ground. Who is the firm that's responsible for this project and? Is this something that, was it groundwork that got us behind or what, what's really going on that we finally? We were a little slow out the gate, you, you sort of framed that and I just wanted to probe a little bit more.
Yes, sir, and it was, if you remember, we had a very wet winter. And they, that project required five foot of field to be placed over that entire project site, so. They had to get the subgrade stabilized before they started. First of all, it had to dry out, well, we allotted some time for that. You know, it kept raining from February into March when they had the notice to proceed. So they, they were slow because of the weather, because of the, the, the wetness of the subgrade. And, and then even with that, we had some unsuitable soils that had to be removed. So between all that, yeah, we did lose, we, we lost some weeks. And that's, that's what I'm referencing as far as coming out the gate, they, they, they just got caught with the, with, with the type of project it was in, in the field that needed to be brought in.
Okay, I just wanted to frame and set expectations for the public that really to your point. It's, it's really weather related, it's, it's a. A macro effect in the sense that we recognize how wet it was during that period of time, which is why all of our ground breakings were pushed off to what just, just recently and stuff, so. We do acknowledge that, I just wanted to mark that for the Parks and Rec Committee that nope, you guys have got this and I want the public to know that we're on point. But we had to work through the weather, so that's all I want to do is just make that reference, Madam Chair, I'm good, I yield, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, any other questions or comments from, from board? Okay, Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, so, so just a couple of quick questions. Sidewalk projects, I think I heard them and you know, that's kind of been one of those pet peeves of mine of kind of what we are, so can you just run over those pet, those sidewalk. Walk projects, just one good time so we can make sure I know who we are.
Yes, sir, let me flip back over to each one, I'm, I'll go through them real quick. So starting with. With Lithia Springs. So that, the, we, we received bids in June. And. Worked through that process and again, on the, on the agenda today is approval for the contractor that was the low bid, Corbett Group. Once that's approved, Miguel will quickly go through the contract phase of it and, and get them a notice to proceed, so hopefully they'll be, they'll be starting work within a month.
Starting and roughly about when we, when you're anticipating, once we approve this, which I don't see that being an issue, but once it's approved, what's the timeframe, you think?
And. At the most thirty days.
Okay, okay, good, good, okay, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, and I mean, if it's sixty days, I, I, I'm just kind of get a roundabout number because you know, this has been a project, at least these sidewalk projects have been around for many years.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
And then, then the other is Chestnut Log Middle School. That, that low bid, same situation, that low bid. With Prime Foundation and that'll be, it's on the agenda for the board's review and approval. And that, again, well, once that's approved, roughly thirty days to go through the, the, the contract execution phase. And get them a notice to proceed.
Got it, okay, go ahead.
And then, you know, I mentioned New Manchester High School, that's a little bit different. We're not quite there with that yet, but we're much closer since we've gotten GDOT's approval. Once we do the public hearing and we get that, get the design completed, we, we'll be moving forward with that. A little bit later in the summer.
So that one is a little bit further down the road, okay?
And then lastly was the Maxim Road Sidewalk. And that, that did not require any, any right of way. So I think Miguel keeps reporting good things, that's. Low engineering's doing that and they're well into the design and it looks, it's looking more and more like we're going to get that project under construction. Latter part of the summer, first fall.
Okay, okay, so it appears all the projects should be done hopefully by the, the latter part of this year?
Yes.
Okay, good stuff. Not sure how we've fallen short in the last couple of months on the collection of the splosh. And kind of overreach where we were. Where are we now with the overreach compared to what we felt, we didn't fall short, we kind of came right in. On the mark, so what's our overreach now, I think at one time it was like about three million plus. What, what the numbers look like as of this time around?
And it's, it's, what our, what we reported this month was three point two million dollars. And we stayed pretty much right at, if you, looking at that graph, since January. We just about stayed right on target with projections, so it hadn't, it has not changed, I think I've been reporting that same number now for, since the beginning of the calendar year.
And I was just anticipating this pandemic, this, this COVID nineteen kind of had a. Some kind of effect, you know, the last couple of months or so on this, but it appears it's still running stable to a degree. At least we're, we're getting our average, I guess, or. Our projected average, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Okay, 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 all righty, that's all I got, I'll yield back.
And I chime in real quick, Commissioner Mitchell?
Sure, yeah, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
And also, if you think about it, I mean, last year probably was our best year in splosh collections. And so we are not as high as we were. Last year, but we are about as high, even better than we were our first year of splosh. So I don't want anyone to get confused thinking that there isn't any change, but the change isn't drastic to where we are shooting be, well below our. You know, our percentages, you know, projections.
We had, we've had such a great overage in the past few years that kind of kept us ahead of the curve. True, yes. Okay, yeah, so, okay, well, good enough, all right, I'll leave it at that, so I'll yield back that, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell, a little bit, okay, Commissioner Guyer. Commissioner Guyer.
Okay, I thank you, ma'am. I couldn't push my buttons fast enough. Terry, on the Highway Five, you, you said we're in the design stage. Will construction start on that this year or you think it's going to be next year?
Oh, let me get, let me back up, get over there. Miguel may can chime in on that, my guess is based on where we're at right now, that we, we may not. It's going to be very close and we got to get through the right of way phase. That, that may be the telltale sign as to whether or not it actually gets under construction.
Well, you said you had an agreement with the developer, so that, to me, that has taken care of the right of way delays.
He has agreed to, yes, Miguel said they, they finally made a. Got an agreement from him on the, the amount of right of way that was needed. And that, that gets them past that hurdle, of course, we still got the utilities to. To work out, but the design, the final design is moving forward now, so you've got to get that done and get that footprint set.
But this year or next year?
It'll go into. The construction will go into twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Also, on the Dog River Bridge, we're, we've got the COVID, the change order. On the agenda today and if that passes. What's the estimated time of completion for that job?
And, and Miguel can go into a little more detail with that, but they are going to have to give the contractor time extension because of some of the delay. If I were, if I remember, I think he's pushed that to the end of the year. But it, it, it should be completed with this year.
This year?
Yeah, it's going to go past when we first anticipated it.
All right, and then I'm going back up to the Stuart Mill Road and. Rentals, okay. That has just been in right of way forever and ever and ever. Remember this was supposed to have been done with a two thousand two splosh. The people, it's a very dangerous intersection. If someone's turning. You come around that curve, you, you know, it's just a very dangerous intersection, so. What's the estimated time of moving with this or breaking dirt, moving dirt?
I totally understand your, your comments, we, the good news is we are, we are in the right of way and it has been slower, I think, and Miguel can, can. Talk on it a little bit more, but the pandemic has slowed that down as far as right of way negotiations. But I, I anticipate. Based on the schedule so far that we, we may have it under contract by the end of the year. And that's, that would be. Yes, by the end of the year with the way things progressing right now, the plans are basically done. It's just a matter of getting the right of way acquired and then Miguel can at that point, put it out for construction.
All right, those are the three things I just had questions about and I appreciate it, thank you, you're back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyer. All right, thank you so much, Mr. Gable. And thank you, Mr. Good, this morning for your presentation. And it sounds like in a nutshell, we're doing better than expected in terms of our revenue, so thank you all for bringing that exciting news to us this morning, particularly as we deal with this unprecedented times in our lives. All right, Board of Commissioners, we're going to move on and with the remainder of our agenda, which is our business item is next. Number ten, tab number ten, I just wanted to share with the Board of Commissioners and also the citizens of our county and our directors today. As Douglas County continues to confront the global pandemic of COVID nineteen. We're now faced with a second pandemic related to racism in our nation. And this particular moment in history shines a spotlight on the nation's necessity to address racial relations throughout our society. Certainly, I want to commend Commissioner Carthen for her amazing effort and taking the lead on this resolution. And certainly will allow, ask her if she would just chime in and just kind of highlight this resolution tomorrow. Tab number ten is approval of a resolution against racism, Commissioner Carthen.
Yes, thank you. In light of all that we've. Gone through these past few. Few weeks. We've been blessed in Douglas County that we've had protests and those protests were peaceful. We've been blessed that the community came together, even though there were some who didn't agree that black lives matter, they wanted all lives to matter. And there was great dialogue, I believe, during those protests to let people know that all lives do matter. But at this point, our ills against the African-American communities are what we are addressing. And just like with anything that we see an illness in. We have to admit that. There is disease, we have to admit that it needs a solution and a treatment so that we can begin the healing. And my hope with this resolution is that we can begin the healing. Not only in Douglas County, but even within our government. There are times when we know that. Biases happen and they happen, I think, within two or three months of me even being. A new commissioner. And they were addressed and I received an apology. And in speaking with the individual, I really sincerely think. That his apology was. Was heartfelt, that he didn't know what he was doing was indeed. A racist moment. And I think. If we just took the time, each and every time we come across that, I think the healing can begin, because I don't believe anybody is intentionally wanting to. Downgrade or dehumanize anybody or any situation. And so I hope that my Board of Commissioners and this county will look at this resolution, I hope that the entire Board of Commissioners. Will adopt this resolution. And, and we begin to move forward and we have a great community, we have a diverse community. But we need to have a community that understands that we push, must push forward to continue to have a community. That accepts all people, all races and all cultures, that's what makes us beautiful. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay.
But Chairman Jones.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioner Carthen, we appreciate this resolution and look forward to it coming before the Board of Commissioners tomorrow. All right, any questions about this or concerns about this resolution, I mean, I'm sorry, resolution for tomorrow before I move on? Certainly don't want to just move so quickly. All right, Board of Commissioners, we're going to move on to tab number eleven, authorization to. Sorry about that, authorization to cancel a solicitation for number nineteen dash zero sixteen for the request for qualifications for website design. And implementation for the Connect Douglas Transit Services and reject all proposals received as recommended by the Transportation Committee. Director Evers.
Yes, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
In December two thousand nineteen, the Board of Commissioners awarded a contract to Civic Plus for the website design and development of the county's website. Which includes all departments. The need for the requested service that was advertised in August two thousand nineteen for website design and implementation for the Connect Douglas Transit Services. Has been eliminated to Connect Douglas opting to utilize the services provided by Civic Plus. Under the current contract that Douglas County has with Civic Plus for website design and development. The design of Connect Douglas's website required additional options. Therefore, these additional options were provided as an add-on cost of five thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. Therefore, we are asking authorization to cancel solicitation nineteen dash zero one six for the request for qualifications for website design and implementation. For the Connect Douglas Transit Services and reject all proposals received.
Okay, thank you so much, Director Evers, Board of Commissioners, any questions or concerns? I can hear you, Vice Chairman Robinson, please proceed.
I, I, well, two quick things, I'm fine with this one, in, in that it just, it, Director Evers, this is just a rejection, correct?
That is correct, we're canceling the solicitation altogether and rejecting the qualifications that we received in.
And this comes, does it come as a recommendation from the Transportation Committee? Was there some type of contingency, County Administrator, can you weigh in, I think this was something that we wanted to make sure that there was cover from the other committees. In other words, we're acknowledging the fact that we're going to go with this broader website and throw this away. Can you, can you speak to that, someone?
Yes, it came as a recommendation from the Transportation Committee. And when Rick and Gary were working through the process for the website design. It was cheaper. More cost effective for us to go with Civic Plus, which was the team that's performing the website redesign on Douglas County.
All right, so was, was there. So was there, were, there were no costs associated with this interim play? And what we currently got out there as a landing pad, that's just our normal operating cost for putting information out there to the citizens, is that accurate?
Yes.
All right, so our current. Connect Douglas. Website, we currently hosted ourselves. It still has the schedules, it still has the map, it still has the information that's out there and all we were talking about was an upgrade for that. And as opposed to going to an upgrade for that, which is already out there, we're just going to roll this all up under this Civic website?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
This, this is Gary Watson, I, I can talk to that. For, for the time being, our website will still be integrated in, into the county's overall website. The work that we want to do moving forward is we will upgrade. Our website to where we will continue to be part of the county's overall website. But we have, will, will have our own standalone, own website presence as well and this is all integrated in the work that, that will be asking Civic Plus to do for us.
All right, so, but again, and again, I'll, I'll yield to one of my other commissioners, we're just going to have one. Website, one overall. Like having silos and having these independent worlds, it's, it's not the most efficient. And I, I guess, I understand that there's a bigger picture, a bigger vision for how we aggregate data, share information with our citizens and also support ourselves operationally. So I'm just, as we evolve from a one point O to a two point O. I'm just, I'm wanting to hear that, yes, we're moving to a, a one place, yes, you can have your autonomy in, in updating your world, but there is a single. View, a single dashboard of our web presence across all areas, all sixty-four functions of our SDS. All of them, one spot, can somebody answer that? One spot. I don't care how to treat branch. One spot. I don't care how the tree branches out, one root, one website. Is that accurate?
Well, our, our website will be part of the overall county's website. So I, I think the answer to your question is yes. There will be a one, one shot for everybody as far as the, the county's website. And I think Rick Martin's on the line today. He might be able to address that, that more. But that's my understanding that it, it will be one, one stop, one shot for everybody.
Okay. I, I'm looking for a definitive answer. You're okay, Gary. Thanks for stepping up, Director Watson, to answer that. But I, I need somebody who's, who owns this and who can answer a single question that there will be one vision.
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Robinson, this is Rick Martin. Yes. One vision. Connect Douglas will have its own website.
Okay. So Connect Douglas will have its own website and everybody else will be part of some other separate website?
Yes, sir.
All right. So that, that runs contrary to my very point, which is why isn't it integrated? I mean, why, why don't we have, I thought Civic Plus had the capacity to have a holistic view of a county. And while it recognizes that there are different operating entities, different subgroups, different agencies, it's still, you should have a single view. And so I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to belabor this and I'm going to yield.
Commissioner, let, let me go back, address that again. If, if, if somebody's looking for information about Connect Douglas, they can go to www.knndouglas.com and it will direct them to our website. However, if, if someone goes to the county's website, celebratedouglas.com and clicks on departments, Connect Douglas will still be included in that department list. So, so we will be incorporated into the county's website, but at the same time, as a matter of individual, individuality, someone could just go to connectdouglas.com and it would go directly to us.
All right. So I'm, I'm paying Civic Plus and I'm paying whoever you're, so I'm, I'm following the money. And I, I get these, these, you know, sort of what we went through before with our prayer website, you had this, you know, we had these side deals. We, we had these favorite entities that were hosting different things and doing updates. And I'm, I'm listening to you guys. And I'm like, okay, it, it sounds like I'm, I'm, I'm just asking questions. Didn't know where I was going with this until you guys again respond. But I'm going to believe it is right. I'm going to take it offline. I'm sure we've got a longer agenda. And sorry to all the people back from, but I, I think I'm okay for right now. I'm okay with doing what we, what was on the agenda, which is the business item, which is go ahead and reject as Director Evers asked for. Let's stay on task with that. I support that as coming out of Transportation Committee and not to belabor that any further. But I will have to double back with my, my peers on making sure that the overall strategy for our, our web design and our ultimate web presence, it's, it's more tightly, tightly integrated than perhaps what I'm perceiving at this moment. Madam Chair, I yield.
Madam Chair, can I, can I say something?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair, Rick Martin here again.
Yeah.
Just, just to clarify, what we're working out is there will be a link on celebratedouglascounty.com that will take you directly to Connect Douglas. And if people wanted to reach Connect Douglas directly, you would be able to reach Connect Douglas directly as well, sir.
Okay. Sounds like a seamless but bifurcated process, which really within the 21st century, that's pretty acceptable. I'm just, Commissioner Mitchell, I know you are the chairman of this committee. Could you chime in a little bit and just assist us? And I know Commissioner Carthen is the vice chairman.
Right, absolutely. And I was going to defer to Commissioner Carthen, but I'll just add just one little note to this. I, I think I see where Vice Chairman Robinson is going with this, just to verify if there are any funds that are associated with the Connect Douglas site that's going to be deferred to what Commissioner Carthen is actually putting together, which is the, the new site, Rick, that we're all working on. So that's my first question. The other part of the question would, would also add to, this will be one site or one company working our new website, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now with that, yes, it will house various departments, Connect Douglas and other things that will be a part of this website, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I think it's, it's back to Vice Chairman Robinson's question. It's going to be one route with various branches. I get that. So I think that's what he was alluding to, to make sure that kind of, yes, we're going to no longer deal with the Connect Douglas layout that you guys were previously going after. We're going to defer and let that kind of, we're going to step aside on that one and, and now focus in on what Commissioner Carthen has laid out and the vision that we've got now through programming, the new site with TJ and everybody was working toward, all of us working toward that. Correct me if I'm wrong and speak to that if you would, please.
Yes. When, when you say speak to, what we're currently doing right now is we're doing an entire overhaul of celebratedouglascounty.com through Civic Plus, otherwise known as Civic Engage as well. We are currently migrating into a new website. We've had multiple communications with all our departments in the county to discuss the process that is going on through the programming committee. We've discussed details, various forms, the layouts, and we're expected to be completed in September, which is, you know, a, a, a date that we're shooting for right now.
And, and so I just wanted to kind of just add that, that's kind of where we are with this website and the design and, and the steps that we're taking to kind of get to the overall, the overhaul of this particular site. So I'm going to defer, like I said, I'm not going to, I'll leave it at that and defer, I guess, my other comments to Commissioner Carthen. If you want to kind of speak toward that as well.
Um, thank you. Yes. Basically, everything that they just said is correct. It's just a branch off from what we got. So that we, we do know that most of the time when people are looking for something as it pertains to the government, they're going to come to one government site. So it just makes sense for us not to have all of these separate contracts when we are one government entity and we're doing the same thing. It also saves money and it also keeps continuity. So each department will have their own branch or link off of our site. They will be able to update it. They will be trained in how to update it so that anyone, any constituent and even us coming to that site will be able to access it with ease. So it just, it just makes sense for what Director Watson decided to do in canceling the bids because we know in order to do that, it probably would have cost more than $5,000. So to us, it's a savings and it's also a continuity of care for those who are coming to visit the site. So I'm more than on board with what Director Watson is wanting to do and bring it in-house and keep it under Civic Engagement.
Okay. And I'll leave it at that. So I, I'll defer to Commissioner Carthen's comments and job well done. And just last, one last question though, I guess, I don't know if this for you, Gary, or to Rick. Are there any funds that could possibly come on board with where Commissioner Carthen and myself and, and the team on programming is going, that could be added to what we are? And I think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, it was 125,000, am I correct, Commissioner Carthen? Okay, right, okay. Are there any additional funds? Because it only would help, not that we have even, we're still under budgeted what we're going with thus far. But I'm just curious and know, so that way it can kind of stay within the programming departments within their budget to kind of keep doing what they're doing and moving those funds forward. So just, just a question, not, you know.
Sure. I'll defer to Gary.
Yes, sir. Well, we, we do have some grant funds available to help pay for the add-on cost of, of the Connect Douglas part of this process.
And so Gary, so those funds can be transferable to the, to what we're doing already with the site itself, correct?
Again, it would be related to the add-on part of what Civic Plus would be doing for Connect Douglas.
Oh, that's fine. That's, that's okay. And I think that could be a focal point. And I think Commissioner Carthen would probably agree that we'll definitely take it and have that focal, that, that focus on that particular project with the addition of the overall.
Yes, sir.
The site itself. Okay. Good enough. Love to make sure we get those numbers and know what they are and, and know kind of how, how much, well, can you share how much that grant, those grant dollars are or?
Well, the, the add-on portion for Connect Douglas is about $5,200. We have grant money that would pay 80% of that 5,200.
Got it. Okay. Gotcha. Okay. All right. Just so we, so we can kind of make a note of that. I, I got a bookmark on that. So thank you again for that. And Madam Chair, I yield back.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Uh, Commissioner Guyer?
Yes. I'd like to ask Gary a couple of questions. Don't you have all this, these pamphlets and notices out there with a dot com for Connect Douglas?
Yes, ma'am. And that's, that's, that's not going to change. Again, the way this will, will be set up is it will, Connect Douglas will be part of the overall county website. That, that's never been an issue. But at the same time, we will have it to where if anyone just is looking for information just for Connect Douglas, they can go to connectdouglas.com and that will pull up our portion of the website as well.
Okay. Okay. So you've bought that?
We have that domain, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I yield back.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Just one last thing. So, so we all are clear. The infrastructure is what we're doing in programming with Commissioner Carthen as leading this, this, and championing this. That's the infrastructure. The branch that Vice Chairman spoke of will be these types of branches, Connect Douglas, departments, finance, and so on and so forth. So, and we will, we'll be presenting something to you guys here probably within the next month to give a take. I mean, we're just kind of working through all the dialect of what that looks like. So it's coming and it's coming soon. And I yield back.
Right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. And also thank you, Commissioner Guyer earlier. I just wanted to say that our citizens certainly have been yarning for a, a great user-friendly system website. And I would like to commend Commissioner Mitchell and Commissioner Carthen for certainly pushing this initiative forward and also the entire programming, programming committee. This has been a long time coming, but I believe that it will be very user-friendly and seamless and very easy to use. So thank you all so much for pushing this project through because the citizens are very excited. I just wanted to share that with the programming committee. We're going to move on to our next item. Board of Commissioners, certainly this time is really pushing us a little bit. Want to talk about tab number 12. Tab number 12 is approval of the preliminary plat for Winchester Farms. Is Phil Schaefer on the line?
I am, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I will share very quickly a screen with you. It shows, uh, share our plat. The plat I'd like to share with you is the plat of Winchester Farms Phase 2. I wanted to show you that this was originally platted in 2015. It was seven lots. And they've since had the plat expire, since plats are only valid for one year. It represents seven lots in Douglas County. The principal portion of Winchester Farms is actually in Carroll County, as is the connecting street that allows them to get to this subdivision. The lots range in size from three acres to six acres. It's gone through development review and has been approved again. So it's coming back before you for recertification. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you so much, Phil. Board of Commissioners, any questions for Phil Schaefer? Okay. Phil, sounds good. Sounds like another pipe farm has come off the, the books.
Yes, it has, Madam Chair. Thank goodness.
That means we're moving forward. Thank you so much. We'll move on to tab number 13. Tab number 13 is authorization to amend the elective provisions of the ACCG Retirement Services Plan Agreement for certain elected and appointed officials as Class 4 employees and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Perry? You're muted. You're on mute.
Morning, everyone.
Yeah, there you are.
Morning, Madam Chair and the Board of Commissioners. Madam Chair, this amendment that I'm putting forth would be applicable to Class 4 employees. Class 4 employees would include the commissioners, coroner, magistrate, sheriff, tax commissioner, clerk of superior court, chief magistrate, probate court judge, state court judge, juvenile court judge, superior court judge, the solicitor and the DA. This amendment would allow for those Class 4 employees to elect in-service retirement benefits once they reach the age, the normal retirement age of 65 or older. So at that time, if they elect this benefit, there will be no further added benefits to their retirement annuity. So they could, you know, at the time they reach the normal retirement age, they would be allowed to begin to receive their monthly annuity. This is something that is done statewide from what I'm understanding from Paul Bates and would be a good benefit to those employees in the Class 4 category.
Okay. Thank you so much, Director Perry. Any questions from the board or comments? All right. Sounds pretty self-explanatory. We'll move on to the next item. Thank you. Tab number 14, authorization to approve the Connect Douglas. Yes, I hear a voice.
I'm sorry. I couldn't unmute.
No problem. You could get the button. Yes.
So Director Perry, can you tell us what we, what was elected before and why this has come about?
What, what was elected before? Okay. So, so this is, this is just an option for us. So it actually was one that, that we had not put into use. So you would have to either meet the rule of 80 or you would have to meet the normal retirement age of 65. And you could not still remain in service to, to take advantage of your monthly annuity. So that's the difference.
Okay. And, and did this come about because you were going through the, through the pension and, and what we had on the books and you?
Actually, this came about a couple of years ago with, with the sheriff. The sheriff, once he was elected, he, he retired prior to his, to his election, his first term as sheriff. And he continued on to receive his retirement benefit in era. So there were some things that we had to clean up. But the conversation actually started then. He wanted to know, you know, if it was a possibility for him to continue on as sheriff and continue to receive his, his annuity benefit. That's something that I talked with Paul Bates about. Then he brought it to my attention that there was an election in our adoption agreement that allotted that. But the person allotting, taking advantage of that benefit would have to be the normal retirement age of 65. It couldn't be, you know, the unreduced retirement age or anything other than that normal retirement age or older.
Got you. So this allows us to clean that up and not have the, the annuity and the, the getting every funds. This allows us to clean this up.
Yes, yes. And it allows us to clean that up and then it allows us to provide this option for anyone that reaches normal retirement age and they're continuing on in service to the county.
Got you. Okay. Do you know how many people this will affect and is this in retro?
It is not in retro. This is something that we're going to affect if approved by the Board of Commissioners. I believe on the first of July, it would not be retroactive. So it would be first of July moving forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Madam Chair, I yield.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cartham. Vice Chairman Robinson.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So this is dealing with benefits, retirement benefits. And this dealing primarily with what it sounds like elected officials.
Yes, sir.
All right. So here I am making the decision on basically my compensation. It's okay. I'm making my point as you normally do. So I'm going to make a decision on my, my, my future parachute. Now, I get it. It's for those who are obviously more seasoned to me, and I'm okay with that. But I'm, I'm making my point. All right. So I'm going to make a decision as a Board Commissioner on the benefits of all elected officials. All right. So if I'm going to do that, I want to know the fullness of when this pensions, to make a decision on this one, I want to know the whole story.
Okay.
We're going to open this up. So I want to know when the pension's best. I want to know when salaries best. I need a full picture of compensation for all elected officials. Because while I'm in here, I, I don't like nickel and dime. And I don't like, like, I just, I've been here too long to understand how like, okay, I need to see the whole picture. So for me to make a decision, I need that information sooner than later. I, I can't speak for my peers. Perhaps they, they'd like to take a different position. Is there a timetable in which I need to make a decision? In other words, I, I want you to take your time and not shotgun this. But if there's some type of vesting period that we need to meet. But I think to my peers, you need to understand what this means for, for us, basically. What, what are we saying here? Again, this would have caught us off guard. This is, and it's not a bad thing. Okay, so something prompted this. And since it opened it up, I want to know everything. So you get me there.
Um, well, it, well, it probably would take longer than, than, you know, than a day. Correct. So it probably would involve Vice Chairman Robinson, us to sit down and have a, a conversation about it. I'm thinking that, as I mentioned, the individuals that it would affect, the Class Four employees. So pretty much the judges and all the other names that I mentioned. So I could get some, some demographic information surrounding those individuals. I'm not sure if that's what you're asking for. But you would, in order to take advantage of this benefit, you would have to reach the normal retirement age of sixty-five. So you would go into office at an older age, or you would have to serve a, a long number of, of terms for, for you to be eligible for this benefit.
So I, and I understand I'm, I'm obviously one of the young, I used to be the youngest. I'm no longer the youngest per se. So I, I'm, I'm okay. It, it's not a self-deal. I'm, I'm just seeing that I'm not impacted by it immediately. I, I guess I'll take responsibility to say, okay, so what are we saying? So I'm not necessarily after demographic. That wasn't what I was after. I just wondered what the financial structure is. When we've been, when, when does everybody, all these elected, when, when is their pension kicking? Is it five years, seven years, nine years? How does this, I'm looking for top level. I'm just looking for, maybe there's something I can take offline. Not certain. My colleagues are, Director Perry, if we can go offline, we can have a conversation, but I won't fax. I don't want a conversation. I need to be in writing. And if I'm satisfied, I'm okay with tomorrow moving forward. If there's some type of deadline they're trying to make by some fiscal year of the state or the federal, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that. I can't speak for my peers. So I, if you can get me there, then I can get there. But see what I need. All right. All right. I yield, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Mitchell, I, I have two people. I heard Commissioner Mitchell first, and then Commissioner Guyer, you could proceed after Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Mitchell?
And I would be really brief. So Fred, just from a timely perspective, is, is, is time of the essence on this?
No, it is not.
Okay. So if, if we took this offline and took it offline, just so we can kind of get some clarification on a couple of making sure what I'm voting on and what effect this will have on, on elected officials and others' pensions and so on. If we did this, the meeting after next or whatever, so time is not of the essence on this here. So if we, if we waited just so we can get some clarification, that's fine.
That, 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 that will be fine, Commissioner.
Because I, I do have some offline questions that I've got that I'd like to ask a couple of other questions. So I'm going to leave it at that and wait and hope that we'll pause, push pause on this and try to figure out, you know, answer at least some of the questions that I have, and I think Vice Chairman Robinson and others. But I will yield back and wait and hope that we kind of take this offline and figure something out down the road.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Guyer?
Yes, ma'am. I agree with Commissioner Mitchell. We don't know enough about what we're voting on here and the fiscal impact it would have on the county, how it's going to affect the, the elected officials. So I would recommend that we table this or put this off on another agenda until we've had maybe one-on-one with you or, or two-on-one with you. And let us ask questions about it. It'd take all, all day for us to do that at this meeting. So with that, I yield back. I just concur with Commissioner Mitchell.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can, I, I've taken a few notes and I think that I know what the, what the ask is and the information that's needed. I can get in contact with, with Paul Bates and get some additional information and, and come back to the, to the board.
I'll say, and also, Fred, I ask that you meet with each individual Commissioner, including myself, and just give us some clarity.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you so much. And we look forward to this item coming back in the very near. Okay?
Thank you.
We're going to move to tab number fourteen. So Clerk, if you could remove tab number thirteen. We're going to table it for further, just, I won't even call it investigation. We just need some more information. And then we'll, certainly I would like to see it come back within the next, at least by the first meeting in July. Well, no, that's next week. At least by the second meeting in July. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Depends on how fast we move. All right. We're going to move on to tab number fourteen. Authorization to approve the Connect Douglas Transit Safety Plan, which is a federal transit administration requirement and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Watson.
Yes, ma'am. This, this is a new requirement for federal transit administration grantees this year to have a transit safety plan. Here in Georgia, we've been fortunate that the Georgia Department of Transportation has taken the lead on this and assisting all transit agencies in the state in formulating this plan. GDOT gathered information from each individual system, including Connect Douglas, and put together a template for us with this information in it. So it has all the required elements that FTA asked for. So we've been working with GDOT on this process for several months now. We have the finished product. And what we, what we're asking for now is the board to officially adopt this safety plan to where we can have Madam Chair to sign it and then submit it back to GDOT by the July the first deadline.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any questions from the board? Sounds pretty self-explanatory. We'll move on. Thank you so much, Director Watson. We're going to move on to tab number fifteen. Authorization to approve the SFY 2021 Aging Services Contract with the Atlanta Regional Commission in the amount of five hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. Reimburseable amount of four hundred and eighty-three thousand and sixty-one dollars and twenty-two cents and a local match of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. And amend the budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Dr. Gilchrist?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. First, good morning. First, I would like to acknowledge that today, June fifteenth, is World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. And to bring to everyone's attention that an estimated five million older adults are abused, neglected, or exploited each year. And to just ask everyone to please, please, please support, report suspected abuse, neglect, or exploitation by calling the Division of Aging Services at four zero four six five seven five two five zero or nine one one. So I just wanted to get that important information out there. So the item on the, on our agenda is to authorize our annual contract with the Atlanta Regional Commission. The match is thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, sounds pretty self-explanatory. Now, I know your match is in your budget, right? Correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
All right. Thank you. We're going to move on to tab number sixteen. Authorization to award a contract for construction of the Chestnut Log Middle School Sidewalk Project to Prime Foundation LLC in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents to be funded from the 2016 SPOSS funds as recommended by the Transportation Committee and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Miguel Valentin?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We're finally at, at the cusp of getting this project to construction. The bids came in. We had a total of six bids. They, they came in well within the budget for this particular project. So upon award of the contract and getting the document signed, we'll hold a pre-construction meeting with the contractor and get the project underway.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? We'll move on to tab number seventeen. Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson?
Thank you. I'm not sure what this feedback is, the audio, but Miguel, obviously sidewalks is, is something that has been expressed, obviously, you know, before you and, and now since you. Again, to the public, the, the county has evolved or is evolving beyond what they used to call cow pastures and gravel dirt roads to a point where it, it's become more of an advanced community. While we've had sidewalks within our subdivisions, which is, you know, we, we, they're manicured lawns and obviously cul-de-sacs. When they come out onto the main, sort of sub arteries, there's a need to coexist with pedestrian and, and obviously mobile traffic. But the cost, and I'm just highlighting the fact that, and, and I recognize that in perhaps non-Mitchell areas, there was a thought that, well, we don't need streetlights. We don't need sidewalks. We don't want that. The convergence and the density of, of obviously the eighth most dense county in the state. It, it, this, this transition, it, it is having an impact on us and, and its growth. And, and we, we need to think about this. This is, it's taken four years from the time that we put this on the list. We're in our fourth year. Kids, by the time we deliver this, the kids will pretty much be driving at this rate. And it's, it's, I'm, I'm, you know, fun with that, but then at the seriousness of it, that, and I appreciate you being here and the thought for this. It's okay. We're going to reimagine and redesign the county and, and upgrade our infrastructure. It has to be, it can't just be, I, I used to foresee us being, we were cheap on, we don't want to spend that money. And, and it was never forward-thinking. And the cost now, it's just that I'm listening to this cost. I'm like, this is insane. And I get it. The cost is the cost. But it was always short. It's all, our, our priorities were always just in the moment. And it was, it was sort of a false approach to community building. It was only in the moment. It never anticipated life beyond the moment. And so here we are, the children and the grandchildren are prioritizing like, okay, y'all weren't very thoughtful. Right? It wasn't very, it was only in the, I, I get conservation, but conservation has to lay a foundation for conserving for what? You're conserving for the future, hopefully. And so I, I'm looking, I'm listening to this. Now, again, you've got the standard, the guys that, you know, obviously you guys laid a standard for future development, economic development. Obviously sidewalks are going to be there. I get it. It's just a retro. And, and obviously, I will never back away from the fact that children obviously need safe passages around these schools, around these parks. It's not, it's not my issue. But you got to highlight the lessons. And I do that often with students. Like, okay, what was the object lesson here? From an urban planning perspective, what was the object lesson? Did we not get, and hopefully that, that obviously life will go on beyond me. But the point being is that hopefully you guys are codifying these, these, these understandings of how a community should be developed and how we can do a better job at, at being more efficient in making our decisions and that we don't have just these false moments of like, this, like we're, we're saving and that, well, that's spending. And we're just like, no.
One four seven zero nine five five one two eight three. Is now exiting.
Okay. I'm not sure what that was. But nevertheless, I, my point has been made regarding this. These sidewalks are very, very important projects. And I know you've got a couple more on the agenda which we won't belabor. I won't speak to those because they, they go hand in hand with the moment. But I, I just think that as we move forward, it's going to cost us to retrofit an age infrastructure. These sidewalk projects and the things that we're doing in the street are just the beginning. The resurfacing that people have said that is important to them, it's just we, we, we conserved to do nothing. I just heard earlier Parks and Rec would like, things are twenty years old, forty years old. We've been waiting on this. It's like, yeah, but look at the priorities that were set. Like park, the things that should have been done in the two thousand and two SPOSS, but what, three SPOSS later? And, and that's my point about priorities. And so I, again, I just got to drive home the point that to the citizens, we heard you. We know sidewalks are very important to you. We know resurfacing is very important to you. And I appreciate you, Miguel, trying to keep this thing to, to sort of fix this thing. Because again, I don't want it to fall on deaf ears or that people are like, no, this is costly. This, this is, think about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars for a sidewalk project? You know how many cars I could have bought with that? But anyway, I'm going to believe it. And my point is well made. Madam Chair, I yield the floor. I haven't got a lot of time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Okay, if there are not any other questions, we're going to move on to tab number seventeen. Authorization to award a contract to the Corporate Group LLC in the amount of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-five cents for construction of the Turner Hill Middle School Sidewalk Project to be funded from the 2016 SPOSS as recommended by the Transportation Committee and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Valentin again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is another similar project. And I will address some of the comments made by Commissioner Robinson as part of this as well. Whenever you have to retrofit an area to build sidewalks, you have to have other components that go with it. For example, if you, you want a separation between pedestrians and vehicular traffic. So you have to have a curb to protect the pedestrians. So with that then comes in the drainage changes that are necessary. So it is a domino effect. If the, if sidewalks go in with the original construction, they would be much cheaper to do. But as a retrofit, it, it isn't just the sidewalk. It's the curb and the drainage that goes with it as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board? If not, I'll move on to the next item. Okay? Thank you. We'll move on to the next item. Tab number eighteen, authorization to award a contract in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents to Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. for milling and patching of various roads in connection with the 2020 LMIG SPOSS Road Resurfacing Program as recommended by the Transportation Committee and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. And Director Valentin, could you explain maybe to some of our citizens, milling and patching is required before you resurface? So can you just explain the process to our citizens?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Be happy to. Some of the roads are in such a bad state of repair that if we were to just overlay on the existing surface, it wouldn't last very long. It would crack and deteriorate very quickly. So we have to go in to the existing pavement, cut out the bad areas, and make the repairs. So we have to go in to the existing pavement, cut out the bad areas and make the repairs. And then, so we can do the overlay on top of good asphalt. Some of the the roads, we have to actually mill the surface, and that is a process of grinding the asphalt that's there down to a couple inches or inch and a half to two inches. And once we do that, then we have a smooth even surface to put the new layer on top. So depending on the condition of the road, depending on the need for patching of isolated areas would be what type of remedial work needs to be done before the actual resurfacing. Unfortunately, at times in the past, there have not been the, there has not been the level of patching because it is costly to to the road pavement ahead of the resurfacing. And so the roads have not lasted very long. So in this particular case, the contract for the milling and patching is to prepare the road so that when we lay down the new asphalt surface, it is going to be a durable surface and will not break up in a few years.
Thank you so much. Board, anyone else, any board members want to weigh in before I move on to the next item? Okay, thank you. I'll move on to the next item. Tab number nineteen. Authorization to approve supplemental agreement number two with the Corporate Group in connection with the construction of the Whitestone Covert Project, which will reduce the contract amount by a hundred and twenty three thousand nine hundred fifty five dollars and forty six cents as recommended by the Transportation Committee and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents. And this is some exciting news. I heard the word reduction in costs. Could you speak to that, Director Valentin?
Certainly, Madam Chair. We had initially had the project designed for the culvert to sit on piles. That type of foundation is more costly. And certainly, it could, if you do not have a good understanding of what the soils below are, then that is a safer approach to to a design. However, as we got into construction of the project, it became a little more clear that perhaps there was a different type of design for the foundation called spread footings, which is a more traditional type of foundation that would still be suitable for that area. And so we had additional geotechnical work done to confirm that the soils could handle a spread footing design. And then, once we determined that, then we had the the footings redesigned. And this change order will change the footing from a pile foundation to a spread footing foundation. And of course, inherently, it is much more cost effective to to construct. It will reduce by a little over a hundred twenty three thousand dollars the 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 cost of the project. Some of those costs, we at some point may need to revisit, but at this time, approval of this supplemental agreement will allow us to get the project back underway, get it under construction, and perhaps complete it before the end of the year, if possible. The contract timeline, however, that's been requested by the contractor is to to run into February first of twenty twenty one. And we believe that that is not unreasonable. But we're still looking for substantial completion of the project to and and to have the road back open to traffic before the end of the year with some cleanup work and some additional peripheral work to to carry on into January of next year.
Okay, thank you so much, Director Valentin. Did a very good job summarizing what the plan is. Any further comments from the board? If not, I'll move on to the next item. Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson, I heard your voice. Yes.
Yeah, we're we're still in the work session mode. So per question, Miguel, go back to the Director Valentin. I want to talk about the Baldwin contract. We talked about this in the Transportation Committee. And you 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 said there's milling and some other things. Didn't you say some mowing? Was mowing involved with this contract?
No, Commissioner, just milling and patching, just asphalt work.
All right, just asphalt work, and it's going to be in-house?
No, the the milling and patching will will be contracted. It will be done by Baldwin if if the board approves that contract. And then the resurfacing, the laying down of the new asphalt will be done in-house.
All right, then I I wanted to bring back what Terry Gable mentioned earlier. So appreciate for that clarity. Again, it's been a couple hours. I wanted to tie them two together. All right, so is this the first time we're doing it that way? Which is, we're contracting that part. Now, is this, this is just for the LMIG, right? This is not for the big SPOST contract, right? We're being consistent. Is that true?
That that is correct. This is primarily for the LMIG program. LMIG normally addresses residential subdivision streets primarily. And the SPOST addresses more the collectors and arterial roads, longer, wider, big roads. So this, the paving that we do on this type of road is something that the county has done many times before. The only difference is that as part of the program, we are doing more extensive maintenance of the road to prep it for the new overlay. And that work, the county does not have the equipment to be able to do. So the county has never done the milling, because we, it's always been contracted out. The patching we have done, and and we do, but it is patching done in a different manner, not with the same type of equipment that that a contractor would do, because they use a milling machine to do some of the deep patching. And of course, we do not have a milling machine. But to your question, Commissioner, the paving that we're doing is something that we have consistently done. And the milling work and the deep patching that is done under contract has always been done under contract when we've done the pavement.
The reason I ask is, when you first came on board, what, about three years ago? It was it was a philosophical shift that we we welcome operationally. How do we approach the service delivery relates to transportation, maintenance of our roads? And I'm constantly listening to, but do we have the capacity to do this, do this well? I I go back to my Riverside, and you and I've had this conversation regarding our bike lanes. And again, the more I hear, I I appreciate the little engine that could, and it believe that it wants to go do. But does it have the capacity and is this the willingness of this board to put their money behind, like, okay, yeah, I hear y'all? And know it's going to cost to deliver transportation in a way that I believe that Miguel has a vision. But let's let's not, let's not, let's make sure that we're really committed to that. Let's make sure that we're understanding what 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 he's saying. To maintain this is going to require an investment. The citizens have declared, look, okay, we appreciate all that, but when y'all get to our subdivision, we will maintain my street. I get it. But I need everybody to have their eyes wide open, like, what what's being said here, like, okay, we're going down this path. I see us easing on this path. It's like, okay, let's make sure we're all on the same page. It's going to cost. Right? To to maintain this at the level that we're saying we're doing. We're not saying we're going to swallow the whole sandwich. But I, as a as a chairman of transportation, I have to also, again, put that out there for my peers, says, okay, yes, I recommend all these things come forward. Know what we're saying. Know what we're getting into. That's all I want to do is make my point. Madam Chair, I yield the floor. We're good. Keep going.
Thank you so much. All right, if there's.
Chairman, yes. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Director Valentin, for the past milling and patching work that we've spent in the past, do you recall what the amount was? Do you have an estimate or a guesstimate as to what we've spent in the past?
I don't, I don't have a clear recollection because the work has been done as a package where they've done the milling and the patching and the paving. So I, so for example, the the work that was done, the last contract that was fairly close to five and a half million, as I recall, the the big resurfacing contract. Certainly, there was milling and patching work as part of that. And it probably would have been in excess, well, in excess of what this contract is because there were more roads and collector roads and arterial roads as well. So it is, it is something that is either part of the overall contract when it's bid. But it is a significant cost whenever we have to do milling. For example, the the one instance that I do recall where the project was done, where the milling was done as part of the the paving contract, which the Lee Road Project. And my recollection is that that was somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just for one road.
Do you know the mileage on that road?
It was two and a half miles.
Two and a half miles, six hundred thousand. Okay. Because I noticed for for each of our districts, except for one of the districts, well, District one, two, and three, we're we're right at about two miles. But I know for District four, we're at three point eight miles, which gets us to that ten point eight miles. So District four is almost double. And I know they are more rural, and they have a few more roads that they're trying to maintain. But the, we we want people to understand the the cost of things and that costs are continually going up for us to do these things. And we're trying to mitigate the costs, I see, by you bringing at least the patching in-house for for us to do that. So I just want people to recognize, you know, in the past, what has been done and and what this administration is trying to do to to clean some of this up. And and that, you know, in District four, we're going over and above, because two miles in District three, four miles almost in District four. So we we just want to, you know, highlight that and what we're trying to do to get the constituents some roads, some paved roads, which we all want, which, you know, our cars want that, our tires want that. And we want to see the progress. So I just wanted to to understand what we've spent in the past versus what we've spent now. So you gave some clarity on that. Thank you so much. With that, Madam Chair, I yield.
Okay, thank you so much. And I heard Commissioner Guyder. Commissioner Guyder?
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate that. And to shed a little light on what Commissioner Carthian was talking about, District four has over thirty something percent of roads in Douglas County. So our our roads are longer. One, one year I could only do one road, and that was post-road. So, well, we don't have as many of the small subdivision streets and everything. And one, one district is actually less than twenty percent. So they get we we've, I've always advocated that we split it up by percentage road because I'm never going to catch up and they're going to go around a couple of times before I even finish one loop. But anyway, I I was just going to ask, we're going to mill Stewart Mill Road, so are we going to keep those millings?
Yes, Commissioner.
Is that part of the contract?
It is in the contract, yes.
Okay, good, because we always have these dirt roads that we don't hardly do anything. But the millings does help a lot, especially with the washing and the dust. So I appreciate that. So just wanted to ask that question real quick. Thank you. I yield back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyder. And I just want to remind our citizens, remind our citizens that a lot of our roads are over forty years old. They hadn't been paved, some of them hadn't been paved to twenty to forty years. And we're planning catch up, and we are working very hard to see what we can do to allow everyone to have a smooth experience because I know it's not that fun when you have to go and realign your cars and also get a new tire perhaps. So with that being said, we will move on to tab, I believe I was at tab twenty, clerk, is that correct? I was on tab twenty? Lisa? I believe I was.
Yes, ma'am, you were on.
Tab number twenty, I believe.
Yes, ma'am, tab twenty.
Okay. Authorization to approve supplemental agreement number one in the amount of a hundred fifty thousand dollars with Southeastern Engineering Incorporated for design changes to the Chapel Hill Road Intersections and widening project and our project and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Valentin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just just a little background on this particular item. The original design was intended to have just three lanes, including turn lanes. And when we received the cost estimate from our design consultant, they pointed out that the the cost of doing the full five lane widening was not that significantly different relative to the cost of doing the three lane widening. And so we explored that, had some discussion at the Transportation Committee meetings, and went back to the to the consultant and said, okay, well, if we were to do that, what are, what is the impact going to be on the design component, if any? And they came back with the fact that the scope changes would require additional survey, and that's understandable. They initially would not have surveyed for an extra lane on either side of the road. They also, because of a five lane configuration acting differently, you have to transition back to the existing. Recommended that we go to the nearest intersection on the north side, which would be the Anawaki Road intersection. The other project would have ended a few hundred feet south of there. And then on the south side, they suggested that we consider going to to the high school as well, because we could take advantage of existing turn lanes and incorporate those into into the project. So this design will give us the final configuration of the road. And what, if if this gets constructed as a five lane, as we envision, then there's going to be very little disruption when the rest of the road begins to get widening widened in the future.
Okay. Thank you so much, Director Valentin. This certainly is good news for District three. And I know Commissioner Carthian has worked alongside with you to champion this this moment right now. And certainly, that road is a main vein here in the county. It's highly traveled, it's a huge corridor, and it's one that is utilized by a lot of our citizens to get back and forth to that South Fulton area. So I'm very pleased, and I know Commissioner Carthian is with this. Certainly, you've taken this project before so we could go in and look at the design even further for widening. Board of Commissioners, any comments regarding this project? Okay, and our Transportation Committee Chairman, I want to commend him for working all these roads. There's a lot of roads in Douglas County. It's almost eight hundred, well, seven hundred fifty miles worth of roads, and I'll commend you in just a second, Vice Chairman, but please you have the floor.
No, it's fine. Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I'm gonna, I mean, this is important for Douglas County, and I I I obviously, just coming through the season, we just came through and really listening to the citizens and what their priorities were. And and you have to listen to the citizens before you listen to staff because citizens are the ones that even enable staff to be here. And and if you think about the list, and I'm not certain about the way the feedback is. If you think about the list that was created, it it was created based on the aggregation of input that had been received over time back in two thousand and seventeen. It's about three years ago. And it it was, and it's important that as we look at the list, it's like, well, where did that list come from? It was obviously either staff or citizens over time had added it to the list, maybe a commissioner advocated for theirs. And and I'm I'm thinking about this, and I was listening to the prior conversation about allocation of resources. I'm like, well, districting lines deals with census. I mean, I, okay, I'm gonna let that go. I'm not going to belabor that point. Obviously, the map was created based on, obviously, minority concentration of people and how it was written. So I'm not going to buy that, but okay, I'll let it go. I I think sometimes that, yeah, District four has more more acreage, but that's what, it's equal amount of people, but it was based on, obviously, the census. If I think about the commercial contribution, District three has the most, the least amount of commercial. They're ninety one percent residential contribution to the digest. District four is about seventy five percent is is residential. Obviously, seventy percent for, obviously, District one. Obviously, 70% for, um, obviously, District one, and I'm pretty much balanced 50/50 almost. So there's a lot that goes into community planning, right? It's just not about me. It's like, do you see the whole picture? And when I think about District three, and I, again, I go back to Commissioner Carthian, I, I was surprised to see the pent-up, like, no, they always want to change Chapel Hill. So going from the prior representation to the current, it's two different worlds. Because the, the whole notion was District three is, it's residential, we don't want any growth, we want to keep this thing contained, and I remember them cattle crawls, it's like, we like it like that. We don't mind driving five miles to the grocery store. We want to keep it. And, and to look at this night and day like representation, it's like, wow. It's like watching it pent up. So I'm delighted and I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased to accommodate this. Remember, we changed the list. I mean, we went against the Mitchell Rule. No, we added this to the list. It was that important. Like, no, District three gets to get their representation, and I know she came after the fact, but we modified this because it was that important. We modified the list to get there on there and to accommodate even now for the future growth of this area, obviously, for that Chapel Hill corridor. So respectfully, I, I, it's an honor to, to sort of make this adjustment in the moment, recognizing that times does change. You can depart, you can acknowledge the past, but you have to embrace your future in this moment of transition. And while there's always a cost with everything, and as we go through sort of the, the, obviously, the process of, what do you want to call this, of construction, excuse our, our mess, it's well worth it. I, I think it's important. So I, I wanted to drive home that, that little lesson there. It says that I, I welcome it, I welcome this transition. Yes, it's an additional cost, and I just want to leave with this point because I'm, I'm almost out of time. What is going to be the source of this adjustment? Miguel, Director Valentine? The source of money to make the adjustment for Chapel Hill? Anybody? County Administrator?
Miguel? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, this, this is Miguel, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry. Uh, yes, we, we had some discussion about the, where the funding was going to come from at the Transportation Committee. And one of the, one of the projects where we have realized some savings is the intersection of Mount Vernon and State Route 92 because we were able to, to have GDOT absorb the cost of that project. And this, it, it originally had been earmarked for improvements, and the funding, I believe, was $250,000 allocated to it. So even though there have been some reduction in, in the interim on that project, it, it is still within a couple hundred thousand, close to 200,000 in funding, that still remain allocated to that project. And so the recommendation is for it to now be allocated to, to this particular effort.
I just want to acknowledge that, that we, we were able to accommodate that and, and find the funding for this. So again, I just wanted to drive home that point. Madam Chair, that's all my time. Are you? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. We're going to move on, but before we move, I just wanted to mention the fact that we've outgrown our infrastructure here in Douglas County, and certainly, this is an opportunity, and I'm excited about all these progressive projects that are coming through. Certainly, I wanted to make sure that I commend our Transportation Chairman, Vice Chairman Robinson, for doing such a great job working, and I've worked with him alongside by side on these roads. And I, it's just appalling to see that's, just some of them just had not been addressed in many, many years prior to me arriving. And this is so exciting to see our roads certainly get a facelift, and some roads need a filling and others need a root canal. So we are working intensively, so I want to make the citizens aware of that. I'm going to move on to tab number 21, which is another exciting opportunity. We've had citizens, it requires some citizens that were concerned about the speed along the Riverside Parkway area. And it's authorization to advertise for a public hearing for the purposes of amending Code Section 14-74 speed limits to reduce the speed limits on Riverside Parkway and State Route 92 slash 154 and 166, and authorize the application for amendment to the county's radar permit to allow enforcement and authorize the chairman to sign our related documents. Director Valentine, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, this will facilitate reducing the speed limit on those roads, State Route 92 and Riverside Parkway particularly. One additional benefit to just having a speed reduction, which should yield a safety improvement along those corridors, is that our sidewalk project on, on State Route 92 for the high school sidewalks had a component of a crossing signal for pedestrians referred to as a, as a hawk signal. And when we initially submitted the plans to GDOT, they, they would not approve that the installation of that signal because the speed limit on the road was too high. And so we had discussion with them, and we said, we concur, the speed is too high. And we've been trying to get it reduced for a while. So we, we had several discussion sessions, iterative process, but finally, they have allowed the process to move forward, indicating that they will, in fact, support this application when it comes back before then. Because this, this element has, or this particular project has two elements. One is the speed reduction to facilitate the, the project crossing, but also because the speed is going to change, there has to be an application back through the Division of Public Safety at the state level for the radar permit to be amended so that the new speed limit can be enforced, the lower speed limit. So we've, we've been in communication with the Sheriff's Office, and, and so this will facilitate, once we go through that public hearing process and, and changing the code to reflect the lower speed limit, then we're able to move the process forward, install the signage, and enforce the lower speed limit.
Okay. Thank, thank you so much. Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your iterations of our work and deliberations with GDOT to move this project forward. Director Valentine, you have one more, last but not least, which is 22, Authorization to Approve a Resolution Designating the Intersection of Douglas Hill Road and Factory Shoals Road as, and Always Stop Control Intersection. Director Valentine, if you can explain?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The, the intersection is in an area that up until recently had really one paved road, and that was Factory Shoals. Douglas Hill, as it intersected with Douglas Hill Road, as it intersected Factory Shoals just to the west of Thornton Road, was a dirt road up until six months ago. And northern portion of that had been also a, a dirt road and was only recently paved. But while this work has been ongoing, there have been development of regional impact, large commercial industrial development that has taken place in that area. In fact, at that intersection, there, there are two developments, one on either side of the westerly leg of Factory Shoals and one up the street. And so that entire area, the character has changed from a dirt gravel road residential area to an industrial commercial area. And so this particular intersection wasn't and isn't conducive to the additional traffic, particularly truck traffic, that is now having to go through that intersection. And ultimately, the South Sweetwater Master Plan envisions that road to be, to be widened, Factory Shoals Road to a three-lane cross-section, and that intersection to be improved. But until that time, till we're ready to do that, we would want to have at least four, four-way stop control at, at that intersection approved.
Okay. Thank you so much, Director Valentine. Any questions or additional comments from the board? All right. Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be real quick, because I will let Director Valentine go. Previous question, I, I don't want this to fall on deaf ears regarding Riverside. Madam Chair, you were in this meeting, I believe. It, it, this, this, at least on the Riverside side of, of what we would call a speed limit initiative, it was a citizen that brought that forth. He lived in Tribeter, and I, I don't want to call him out, but it, it was important to, to acknowledge that he, he, he didn't feel me very well, which, which is okay because I'm driving home the point that, no, but his voice still mattered. And he brought that forward to us in January, and I remember we immediately, Miguel, we took it into committee. And we, and I'm highlighting this point about interaction with citizens. No matter what you may think about the differences of each other, your voice does matter, matters to this board. It, it mattered that important, it says, regardless of how you thought of me, that need was still important. The operational safety, my kids drive up in that street, my parents' kids drive up that street, and have to pull out there on that major thoroughfare. And then obviously, to the Anawakians up the street who also had that concern about the school crossing. It's, I'm, I'm driving it full circle, it says, no, it, it, the citizens, your voice does matter. We do hear you. It's okay. We'll get beyond the moment. But at the same point, it's just, I, I, I've got to highlight that, like, no, remember that conversation now, but here we are. In other words, we overcame that moment. It says, no, it's good, though. I got you. And so, Madam Chair, I think this is important because this is a major initiative. This ain't, I know we sort of zipped through this, that is a major initiative to slow speed down, all things that go into that impacting two major areas along that corridor. So that is a major project that came out of citizen input. And so we're driving home that this administration does scare citizens. You, you don't have to be like me, Mr. Valentine. And so I yield the floor on that, Madam. I just want to drive home that point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? If not, I'm going to move on to tab number 23. Thank you so much, Director Valentine. It's authorizing to advertise for a public hearing for a new ordinance regarding hazardous pay, hazard pay. Attorney Bernard, are you on the phone? Or Attorney Bernard?
I'm, I'm here, Madam Chair. I apologize, took a minute to get the mic right. This simply is a follow-up to the board's prior discussion regarding hazard pay, and we did not have anything on Douglas County books historically regarding same. So this is on the board's consideration for advertising so it can be part of our code of ordinances that authorize during certain emergencies declared that hazardous pay could be awarded by this body. The main benefit to the county by having such a ordinance is that some relief under COVID-19 and other type of emergencies requires you to have, have an advanced hazard pay ordinance in place before the hazard. It's not come up before until it's COVID-19, so this is really a going-forward thing. It doesn't stop the board from anytime awarding hazard pay, but this will allow us hopefully to recoup some of it going forward. Based on what I've heard in discussions with GMA, FEMA, and others, I'm not sure it will have any direct effect on any awards related to COVID, but any new emergency, it potentially would.
Okay, thank you so much, Attorney Bernard. Any comments from the board? All right?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So hazard pay, so what do we, this is only in emergency mode, if I heard you right. So this is not one of those where, in order for people to come back to work, we're going to have a, across the board, we go, there's, let's just say, there's a protest for hazard pay. In other words, like, come back, we're going to order everybody back, we got to pay this hazard pay. And so the difference between our normal operating budget and this new demand to get people to come back to work, we're saying that the, the state or the feds are going to pick this up. What, what am I listening to, Ken? And I'm praying something, I want to make sure I understand what, what, what I just heard, please.
This has nothing to do with any current award of hazard pay, and it has nothing to do with people coming back to work. There's no outright requirement that you ever award hazard pay. What this has to do with more is going forward, the county having something on the books that authorizes the award of hazard pay because under certain FEMA and GMA, and maybe some of those folks on the line, under FEMA and GMA requirements for this COVID, for people that are being awarded hazardous pay and to get it reimbursed, they're saying you had already have a hazard pay ordinance on the book. So I think it was Commissioner Carthian during one of our meetings asked that we develop a ordinance. That, that is still completely discretionary in the future when y'all award it, still requires a board vote, is not a requirement, is a condition of employment. Nobody has a right to hazard pay unless the board actually gives them hazard pay. This is more about the county's ability to recoup that money it does award in a future emergency because some requirements now are saying, we won't give you a reimbursement on hazard pay award unless you already had an ordinance in play at the time of the emergency. So this is really more policy cleaning up for best practices going forward, but it does not limit this board in any manner.
I, I just want to get to define the economic impact or implications that I might have perceived or not perceived. I'm good. Madam Chair, I yield, I'm good.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman. All right, thank you so much, Attorney Bernard. Any other comment from the board before I move on to the next items? Okay, we have the approval of expenses to our Board of Commissioners. I encourage you to look at your expenses, and we will approve accordingly. And then we have two items, I believe, that will be discussed in executive session, which is items 27 and 28. So are there any other further comments from our Board of Commissioners before I call for executive session or request? Attorney Bernard, do we need to go into executive session?
We, we do, Madam Chair, for personnel and for litigation.
Okay.
Mark, I just want to verify for Mark. Mark, I don't believe there's any real estate matters, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. That's correct.
There is still one other discussion item that we may need to cover before executive session for Ron Roberts.
Okay. Which, which one is it, Lisa? Is it 27 or is it an additional item?
It's the, um, let me pull it back up here. It's number 27.
Okay, okay.
The annexation.
Okay. Let me go on to, we have one more attorney before I call for an executive session. It's tab number 27, which is the city annexation of Parcels South of Arbor Place Mall, and I believe it's Ron Roberts or Phil Schaefer's on, on the agenda.
I've got it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
So the annexation came to us a couple of weeks back. It's 126 townhouse apartments located just south of the mall off Reservoir Drive. The development itself represents a 12.89 dwelling units per acre on this property, and I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the board because a Reservoir Drive, portions of it will remain county-zoned, and therefore, I didn't know if Director Valentine wanted to weigh in on the actual annexation issues in terms of what the county will still be required to do on Reservoir Drive and to make sure that the applicant for the city negotiates and discusses and, and comes to the County Department of Transportation for access management issues and gets the permits that allow him to enter this property. I want to make sure that we gave the Board of Commissioners a chance to weigh in on just the annexation as an issue in general. Of all the places you could put 13 units an acre, south of Arbor Mall is probably the most ideal place you could stick that much density. We don't have anything comparable to that in the county at all right now, but it is quite dense, and just wanted to make sure the board was aware of it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the middle of a meeting with the Board of Commissioners.
Ken, could you mute yourself? Sorry about that. Keep going, Mr. Schaefer.
Yeah, that, that, I'm open for questions. We, we just learned this morning that it was 126 units for the 12 acres, or 100, yeah, 128 units for the 12 acres, and just to make sure the board knew that it was townhouse development.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Guyer, this is your district.
Yes. And as is the mall.
As is the mall. I just am concerned about Heritage Drive, Phil. That's a residential, small subdivision. And so they, the people there want to make sure that the access to all these townhomes is not gonna encroach on their road. Their little private, it's not a private road, but it's like a cul-de-sac area. And they, they can't stand the thought of that much traffic going in and out. Now, Reservoir Drive, it goes out on the little road that goes back behind Arbor Station. However, and that would be ideal if they went that way. But there is a concern about coming out and turning left on there. And so I hope that if the city, if this is approved and the city does annex this, that they have a lot of input from maybe even some of our county people as far as the traffic right there on that little small area. And there's little roads coming out in all different directions right there.
Right, that, yes, you're, you're right. That's why we, if, can you see my screen that I'm sharing?
Yes.
Okay, so Heritage Drive does not communicate with the property that is in question. The property in question is gonna be surrounded by RLD right here. It only accesses Reservoir Drive. All the rest of Heritage Drive is.
I think the people that are gonna sell this property, they do have a house or access that is contiguous to the RLD.
Okay.
So, and there's, there, it's been said in the past that they might want to use that as an exit or to the property once they sell that. So it is, it may be a concern to the people that live on Heritage Drive and the little offshoots of the little cul-de-sac roads there. But just coming off of, with the exit and entry being Reservoir Drive and it connecting to the little small road that goes back behind the mall. And then you've got all these other little side streets coming out also. It's gonna be, it may require a red light or something, but it's gonna be a very dangerous pullout if there's not some infrastructure put in there.
I will, I will, if it's the board's desire, I will absolutely convey your concerns and the residents' concerns to the City Council and to the director over there, Ms. Williams.
I would like for you to, you know, voice our concerns about it, especially for the residents there on Heritage Drive. But also just the congestion that's gonna, is gonna cause coming out on that little road without further infrastructure. Does that make sense? Maybe a different, another turn lane or?
Well, I, I think.
A red light or whatever.
On your behalf, well, on your behalf and on behalf of your constituents, what I would suggest that there be no communication with Heritage Valley Drive at all. That the, all the access be off Reservoir Drive.
Well, I have been contacted with, by some people out on Heritage Drive. And what I'm saying is the people that are selling this piece, this large tract of property also owns a house at the end of Heritage Drive. And it was his idea at one point of having a connection to the larger tract.
You're correct. As I'm scanning this one, when I do information, that is, it does communicate through.
Okay, so we just want to protect the subdivision there.
Absolutely.
That little road cannot handle that much traffic going in and out of there, so.
And we have, just to be clear, we have not seen a site plan from the city for this particular annexation, though that would have been quite helpful.
But I don't know if we can put a contingency on it or not, just saying we would be opposed to access on Heritage Drive.
I will, I will absolutely convey that to the city.
Okay. All right, with that, I yield back, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much, Commissioner Guyer. And thank you, Phil, for taking our concerns, or particularly Commissioner Guyer's, our concerns to, back to the city and the City Council. And we, and Phil, how soon do you think you can get a response for Commissioner Guyer and also for me as well? I'm interested.
I will have a letter prepared this afternoon.
Okay, certainly we want to hear the voices of our, of our citizens with regard. Yes.
I just have a question. Thank you. I have a question for Director Schaefer. Can you also tell us how this will impact us? Because if we still have land in that area that the county is responsible for, how are we going to divide that with the city? Because it seems like they want to annex everything, but we also, if you go annex it, we want you to pay for, for what you are doing. We don't want that to be on the backs of the county taxpayers if you're gonna take some, if you're gonna annex property.
Correct. And I, my difficulty here was when we received the packet of information last week, they did not include the information on the development. And this has been an ongoing struggle with the city staff attorney, where we get the annexation only, we get the zoning district that they're requesting, but we do not get the details of the project. This has been a problem. The issue blew up on Blair's Bridge with the commercial annexation last year and then the construction of an 80,000 square foot building, where Blair's Bridge is county maintained and Lynch Road is not. And so when they came to the county, they realized they had to come to the county for an access permit. They couldn't get one because of some other issues with the sewer lines running through Blair's Bridge. So here again, we don't have enough information about what's being proposed so that I could give you, or at least talk with Director Valentine to discuss, what is the implications for Reservoir Drive? Because you're correct, there will be a segment of that road that is half in the county and half in the city. And when it's half and half, we have to have an intergovernmental agreement as to who maintains that road. And I honestly don't, I can defer to Director Valentine as to what, what the status of Reservoir Road is, because I don't know. But I would have preferred to be able to say, well, 128 units on 12 acres, that's a significant impact and there's gonna be maintenance ongoing for that road. So if that's part county and part city, what's the status in terms of the intergovernmental agreement for that roadway?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I, can I jump in on that point, Commissioner Carthon and the rest of the board? Here's my suggestion on this. My suggestion is there's too many unknowns not for us to go ahead and direct Phil to file an objection with, with the state. While I will tell you the law is very broadly favors cities' ability to annex, what will happen in the process of us filing an objection is these kind of details will be brought forward and hopefully negotiated. I'm a little concerned because I don't know what the timeframe is, Phil, and if you know the timeframe. At some point in time, him writing a letter, them responding to it, the time for you to object's gonna pass. So I would suggest that this board authorize Phil to file an objection on behalf of the board. And the details can get worked out during that process where essentially they bring folks together to try to work out some way for it to be approved by the state. Now, having said that, as Phil knows, the law is very broadly favorable to cities under ability to annex. But it seems to me there's too many unknowns on this one just to rely on correspondence. I think it's gonna fall through the gap if we're not careful.
Yeah, the timeframe for 30 days is going to expire probably before we could get everything worked out.
Right. Commissioner.
Madam Chair, I would, yeah, Madam Chair, what I would do is just with the board's permission, put under new business and Phil can do the write-up, because I don't know the, I don't have the parcel in front of me. But we get with Lisa Watts and put under new business, authorize the chair and staff to file objections to that particular annexation, get it voted on and Phil can get the objection out. And these details can be worked out during that process. That's what I would recommend.
Okay, I'm not sure if we want to take it all the way to the line of objection. I believe we wanted just some more research, county attorney. And wanted Phil to bring some information back, particularly to Commissioner Carthon. I mean, not Carthon, but Commissioner Guyer. So if the board, I don't know what this board, you know, whatever the will of the board is, I would do. But I was just thinking, we wanted some more research. Just needed some clarity. So could one of the board members weigh in and then we'll go on from there.
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Yes, Vice Chairman Robinson.
Yeah, again, I'm gonna be, I'm always gonna respect home rule for, obviously, the district, this resides in. But there is a historical that we don't have to accept this. We can say no. We can object. And to Ken's point, they have authority to do what they do. The question becomes, is it worth that on this project? Right? Let's not, let's not lean us one way or another. We can say no. And they can still move forward with their power as a municipality. Right? Let's not confuse the two worlds. I'm listening to see what my peers really, to your point, is there a real issue here? Who's gonna maintain? I mean, obviously at some point, we're gonna get into service delivery and all that stuff. And I, this is just a precursor to the capacity, be able to like, no, don't, no. Don't give away your power now. It's a precursor to that, like, okay, who does what? Right? So you're gonna drop this on us and what's that impact gonna be on us? You shotguning this? You have to pay attention to the process. You gotta know what you're looking at with this. And so to my board, again, I went with my peers. However y'all want to handle that, y'all know I am very comfortable with a no, recognizing I respect their power as well. This is not an issue, but we do have the right to understand, okay, but what's about to go here? Especially if we have to now incur something, the residual back on Chapel Hill, which we now own or wherever this is gonna come out at. Again, those, you guys are closer to this than I am, so I can't call it. But I'll back you 100%. Madam Chair, I yield. That's it. Thank you.
And Commissioner Guyer, certainly I want to hear your stance and then we can move forward with.
Well, my suggestion would make, make it imperative that they take over that entire road. You know, that be annexed too. But we just need to watch this very closely because of the traffic problem it's gonna cause. But there's gonna have to be some infrastructure added out there on that little connector road that runs behind the mall. That road is not big enough. It's only a two-lane road, except for a little turn lane. But it's a very dangerous area because people are, there's a hill there, very steep hill. And it's hard to see coming out of some of the other roads there. So we just need to make sure that there's some infrastructure put there. Red light, I think it's gonna have to be a red light, to be honest. But I do think that the city should take the entire reservoir road or street over with this. That's just my recommendation.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner. Board Commissioners, what we'll do, it sounds like it's a consensus right now because we wanted some other things added to this proposal from the city. And certainly, Schaefer, Phil, if you would just certainly just take that back to the city as well. Right now, with the objection, certainly that gives them latitude to give us some more information and state the concerns that Commissioner Guyer has just run past this board and then we'll go from there. Okay?
Madam Chair, can I just clarify?
Yes.
It's one thing for Phil to write a letter to the city asking about his concerns. It's another thing to file a timely objection. What I think I heard Phil say is the time for filing a timely objection with the state will run before y'all meet again. Are you simply wanting him to inquire and just leave it because the time's gonna run? Or are we gonna file an objection and get it worked out during the settlement conference where they bring all these issues forefront and try to work it out?
I prefer him to send a letter. I think that'd just be a way, so certainly, I think all of us are in agreement. We want to move the county and the city forward.
Okay.
Just.
So we're not filing an objection, we're just simply letting the city know our concerns?
Our concerns, yes. All right.
Madam Chair, I don't, I don't agree. I do have to express that I don't agree. I think we should, just to protect ourselves, file that objection and allow them to come back. Because if we don't, and then we find out that it really is, it's on us and that they annex it and then this property owner starts doing and digging and then they're gonna come back to us asking us, well, can you maintain this? Well, can you do that? I think, I think we protect ourselves if we go the route that Attorney Bernard just stated. And, and it's just in good keeping with making sure that we protect ourselves. So I just wanted to voice that, that I think we should file the objection.
Is there, I'll make one comment to Commissioner Carthon. The, the issue of protecting ourselves still falls on the Board of Commissioners. You do still have an access permit issue off of Heritage Valley Drive because that is still in the county. And therefore, Director Valentine would get the ability to say, no, we don't believe this should communicate through this subdivision that is still out in the county. So the issue would fall back on the city to have an arrangement with the county on Reservoir Drive as the only in and out for this 128-unit development, rather than allow this owner to come through his single-family residential property in the subdivision. To do that, to take that lot in that subdivision and run a road through it is gonna require them to discuss access management with our DOT. And Director Valentine can weigh in if he wishes, but I believe he has absolute authority to say yes or no at the moment they come through for development review. Because they would still have to go through our DRC process if in fact they do wish to access back through the county.
Madam Chair, this is, this is Miguel. If I may comment on this item, I think all of the concerns that have been expressed are very valid. Typically, if we were looking at a site plan of that density in the county, we would be looking at infrastructure improvements within the roadway immediately in front of the subdivision and at an intersection with another road down the street. So in this particular case, if the county has part of the road, then the infrastructure improvements at the intersection would fall on the county. And we would not have the ability to put that back on the city. So that is a legitimate concern that whatever improvements are associated with mitigating the impact of the development should be borne by whoever has jurisdiction on the road. And in this particular case, unless the jurisdiction of the road is negotiated or made a condition of the annexation, then it would fall certainly on the county. The other item that Phil mentioned about the connectivity to Heritage Drive, certainly a site plan would come back to the county and we would have the ability at the DOT to look at it and make recommendations as it relates or deny as it relates to that access. However, something of this significance, it could be that a subdivision that dense can only be done if it has multiple access points unless there is infrastructure improvements done on the main access road. So, so those two items, if it came back to the county DOT for review after the fact, we certainly would review it and make comments about the feasibility or the wisdom of that connectivity. Certainly, they would have a discussion with the board at that time as well.
Okay, so you sound, what I can hear from you, you're just, what you just said, Director Valentine, certainly we have some leverage. I guess when the document comes back to you, you have an opportunity to weigh in and determine which way we go at that time. Is that what I heard? I want to make sure.
Well, certainly we will have the opportunity to do that, but we will not be in the same position. I think that if the objection is. I, I think that if, if the objection is filed, then we, we have certainly a lot more leverage to have discussions with them.
Okay. All right. Well, it sounds like a consensus. Commissioner Carthon, I know what you're, you're, yes. Commissioner Guyder?
Yes. Miguel, I, I'm thinking that we should require them, or if, I, I don't want to turn the project down because it is something that, you know, that we've talked about this, we need more housing, lower income housing and stuff like that. But we, we've got to require them to take over Reservoir Drive in its entirety because we don't want to have to fund the entry to this. If it's going to be in the city, it should be on them. And if we could stipulate in the negotiation or whatever, that we, that, that we require them to take over that road in its entirety and any infrastructure that's going to be required. I don't, I don't like the fact that we may end up paying for a road that is just benefit for the city. So.
Yes. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I didn't mean to cut you off, but, but, yeah. To your point, those, those requirements, we could not impose those requirements on the development unless it was within our jurisdiction. So it, it, it would seem that with those concerns, filing an objection and then trying to negotiate would be the way to, to potentially have some discussion about that. Otherwise, the entire property would be in the city and we would have the jurisdiction on a section of the road with no ability to enforce improvements on.
Is it imperative that we use that road, make them cut their own road? We could just close that road as it is in the county. I don't, I don't want us to have to pay for something this large and this expensive because we don't know what kind of infrastructure is going to be required out on that little service road back behind the mall. And that could run into big bucks that we don't have. And so I just think they either take the road or we just close the road and let them build their own road. We could kind of twist the arm, I guess you'd say.
Commissioner, that's, that's a different discussion. But, but I think that the, the avenue available to the county to, to file the objection and then have a discussion about our concerns certainly is a viable one.
But, but I, I know from the past that the annexation laws favor the municipalities, very much so. They allowed annexation of Thornton Road by going down a pipeline. So I'm just saying that we need to push this very strongly just because we may end up paying for something that is mostly a benefit for the city. With that, I yield back.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyder. So with that being said, I, I do hear two things strongly move forward with an objection. And then Commissioner Guyder, I heard that you sound like you just really want to continue to work and negotiate along the sides because either way, it sounds like the municipality will have the ability to move forward. So at this point, I'm at the will of the board. So what is the will? And I heard you loud and clear, Commissioner Carthon, but I'm trying to yield to Commissioner Guyder, it's her district. Commissioner Guyder?
I'm sorry.
I'm yielding to you.
I may need to talk with, let Ken hone in on this because we can either oppose it and then we, we end up fighting with the city about it. Or I don't know if go any, say, we don't oppose it, but we do require these stipulations upon acceptance.
Well, let, let me, can I weigh in, Madam Commissioner, to that point? Listen, when you file, I think that maybe there, there might be a little bit of a false premise. Filing an objection does not mean the project is going to be canceled or the annexation won't happen. Filing the objection starts a procedural administrative process where the county's concerns are addressed in a formal way to iron out all these concerns we have. And then there may be an agreement that just simply ends the objection and we move forward. Or it may be they get it without addressing some of our concerns. It, it's not a legal, it's not litigation. We're not doing an injunction to stop the city. We're just simply protecting our right for these interests that have been raised. And the process will air these out. And actually, the process may be helpful to the city because it sounds like some things that have been said today in this meeting will be brought to light that may be a concern of theirs because they got to get phone calls too when that corridor has, if they have issues with traffic. So I'm just suggesting, file the objection. It can be withdrawn later if need be. It'll give us an opportunity during the administrative process of review to work it out with the city and DCA so they can move forward and some of these concerns can be addressed. That, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
And I would go along with that.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Bernard, and thank you, Commissioner Guyder, and thank you, Attorney Bernard, for the clarity. We're going to move forward with an objection and, and certainly we'll wait on some responses and then that'll give us opportunity to, to gain some clarity on some of those concerns.
Perfect. That, can, Phil, while Phil's, Phil, will you get with Lisa Watson about how that needs to be worked on the agenda for tomorrow, please?
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Board of Commissioners, now we are moving to the moment of an executive session. Attorney Bernard has just announced that we do, do need to go into executive session. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second and a discussion. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying your name. Ramona Jackson-Jones, yes.
Kelly Robinson, yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
And Johnson-Guyder, yes.
Tarynia Carthon, yes.
Okay. We have a 5-0 unanimous vote and the motion carries. Okay. We will sign off and Mark, you will call us back, correct?
No. Yes, ma'am. Just keep your Microsoft Teams going and I'll call you back.
Okay. Thank you.
So we, we sign off?
Yeah. Well, no, you don't sign off, you just.
Yes, sir. You, you hang up and Mark will call you back.
Yes. He's going to call you back.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much, TJ. Board of Commissioners, we've had a very productive meeting today. We had quite a robust agenda, but we covered quite a bit of good material and we've made some great progress today. You have any other comments, Board of Commissioners? I just always like to close and with a statement to the citizens. Okay. With that being said, I want to just make it clear and also public that our in-person meetings will resume on July 20th, Board of Commissioners. That'll be our work session and then the 21st would be our Board of Commissioners meeting. So we're planning to do that. We will meet for both meetings in Citizens Hall because we need that social distancing component in place. We will make sure that our cabinet is not sitting up at the top level with us. We will have them sitting at a table so we, everybody can spread out. So just want to make you aware of that. Right now, we, we will start meeting back in person, on person, on July 20th. However, if the governor's orders. And also cleaning hands and also those things that are relative to COVID-19. COVID-19 is still active and I know we are moving into our third month, but it's, it's very easy to forget where we are. And I just wanted to just say that we're still active in COVID-19. And I do have some stats available for our citizens to kind of give you an idea of where we are today. Today, we have 57,681 confirmed COVID cases in Georgia, which 655 of those cases are confirmed here in Douglas County. We have 9,200, we have 2,451 deaths and 28 of those deaths are associated with Douglas County. We have 9,248 hospitalizations, or should I say previous hospitalizations. And Douglas County, we had 147 were related to Douglas County. And total ICU, which is intensive care unit admissions, was 2,034 for the entire state. I want to remind again our citizens to continue to be aware because we are still fighting this invisible virus and we need to remain disciplined and, disciplined and diligent as we go forward. So masks are highly recommended. If you're out and about, I was in the community this weekend and noticed that it was about maybe 60 to 70% of our citizens wearing masks and certainly it's highly recommended. We cannot make you do anything. That's your First Amendment right. But certainly, I just wanted to encourage you from a healthcare perspective and because of my knowledge and background, if you could protect yourself and others. Also, hand washing is critical as we go forward. Continue to wash your hands. And Commissioner Mitchell had a birthday background earlier and I wanted you to just remember the birthday song. Just continue to think about the birthday celebration song when you wash your hands. And also your, our social distancing is very important. We want to continue to do that. We call it physical distancing because we all like to be social. And the virtual, I just encourage you to continue to use your virtual technology because again, as I said earlier, this too shall pass, but we still in the midst of trying to get over the, I call it, we're trying to get over the 50-yard line and we're just not there yet. Also, last but not least, if you can continue your disinfection and your sanitation of surfaces within your homes, your keyboards, your telephones and in the office through this moment. With that being said, Board of Commissioners, if it's nothing else, I would certainly, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.